Wait, is that you though? Are you on... Let me just double check. Because remember you had that problem last time. Check, check, one, two, three. Can you hear me? Did you switch ports to choose? Can you check the... make sure in Zoom that it did the right one? Why'd you do this? Unplug if I said... just unplug them and see if you can hear me over the speakers. Okay, check, check, check. I can see me on the board. So I can see my level moving on that board right there. Okay, so then just turn the level up. All the way up. How about this? Can you hear me now? That's negative. Hello, how are you? This is Assistant Moderator McQuado. Never mind. Oh, yeah. Well, apparently nobody can hear me. Hello. What is wrong?
Unmute it.
Test one, two, three. Hear me? Test one, two, three.
Is there any reason you want to unmute me? Yes?
Thank you for joining us today. We will be getting started in about 90 seconds. Thanks for joining us. We'll be getting started in about 90 seconds. 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 We'll be getting started in about 90 seconds.
you.
Okay, test one, two. Okay. 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 Test one, two. Okay.[593.88]
First this evening, after you can be, after you finish, I think, special town meeting two.
And that's exactly what we plan to do. That assumes that we've worked through articles one through six before we get to the special. And the longer we spend on this kind of parliamentary issue, the less chance we'll have of accomplishing that. So I'd like to proceed to Article four, under which the main motion is on page four dash three. It's moved by Ms. Hamilton, seconded by Mr. Doughty. Ms. Hamilton, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Heather Hamilton, speaking for a unanimous select board. When I first came onto the select board, I enjoyed meeting the small business owners who operate within the town. However, in the four short years I've been on the board, our meetings often are up to an hour or two behind schedule, and these owners wait to be called on and to be asked questions the staff have already addressed. This is a task that should be under the purview of the town administrator. Warrant Article four seeks to make a change to Section five of the Town Special Legislation, known as the Town Administrators Act, Chapter two seventy of the Acts of nineteen eighty-five, as amended, by deleting a number of exceptions that require these licenses to be approved only through the select board. This is a, this is part of a two-step process that the select board seeks in order to better manage its meeting time and to delegate authority to the departments we already rely heavily on to do the background checks and sign-offs. The second step is to create the process to review once we have a home rule approved. Please vote favorable action on warrant Article four.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dennis Doughty, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, speaking for a nearly unanimous advisory committee. As Ms. Hamilton addressed, warrant Article four is the first part of this process. It allows the, it would allow the select board to delegate by bylaw the licensing authority. As we said in our report, it's important to be clear that this article is not about how licensing would be down, would be done now or in the future. If this article passes, and of course, if the legislature agrees, the select board will have the ability to come to some future town meeting and propose one or more new warrant articles to change our licensing practices by delegating some or all of them. And those articles would be by law changes, would require the comprehensive vetting and review process. We put all such by law changes through. The select board believes these practices can be streamlined and will be working with CTO and S to review the practices to look for such opportunities. And the advisory committee is hopeful that those improvements will be found and endorses the position that town meeting should have control over licensing practices. There's no direct financial impact from this article. Subsequent articles that could arise may have financial impact. And this article fits nicely into the quote "specific to Brookline" category that Representative Vitolo has outlined for what constitutes appropriate home rule petitions. This is a process question, not yet a licensing question. And by a vote of twenty-one to one with no abstentions, the advisory committee recommends favorable action.
Thank you. And speaking of Mr. Vitolo, we'll now hear from Representative Vitolo. You have three minutes, sir. Not on. Okay. Representative Vitolo is busy legislating, no doubt. So we'll move to a vote on the motion at the top of page four dash three, which you've heard described. And we're ready for the vote. Okay, the voting period has started. Yes, if you favor this motion. No, if you're opposed. And abstain if you're abstaining. And please remember that you only get one bite at the apple. That is, the vote that you first submit is the vote that is finally submitted for you. Voting period is over. May I have the count, please? Oh, Ms. Duffield? Okay.
I was able to vote.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of two hundred and two in favor, nine opposed, and six abstentions. Article five. The motion under Article five is on page five dash two. It's moved by Ms. Ashkenazi, seconded by Mr. Senman, that the town authorize a, the grant of an easement that you'll hear described by, first by Ms. Ashkenazi. This takes two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Mashkenazi, speaking on behalf of the unanimous select board recommending favorable action on warrant Article five. Article five seeks for the town to grant an easement for access to the private parking lot at the rear of sixty dash sixty-four Harvard Street. This was a commitment that was not completed when the town changed the access point nineteen ninety-seven, when the public health parking lot was redesigned. The select board agrees that it is appropriate to grant the easement and that the special town and that this town meeting to remedy this oversight.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Pollak. Uh, unmute yourself, please.
Yep, accomplished. I have a couple of slides. I don't know if they're queued up.
Well, tell us who you are first.
Yes, David Pollak, town meeting member from Precinct eleven, speaking on behalf of the unanimous Advisory Committee. Uh, just a couple of visuals to follow up on Ms. Ashkenazi's presentation. Let's get oriented. This is the town center. Town Hall is at the bottom. The triangular block is surrounded by Washington Street and the library on the bottom, School Street and Harvard Street. And the square shows the area of the easement. Next, please. Zooming in, here's the parking lot, subject property, behind sixty to sixty-four Harvard Street, and then the drop-off loop for Pierce School, which is in yellow and which is the easement. And then the, the health building is kind of at the lower right. Next, please. So this drawing, which was sent out in the supplemental mailing, really tells the story. If you look at the sort of snake-like extension of Pierce Street, where it used to be dead-ending into Pierce Elementary School at the upper left, you can see that the parking lot in question, where it says sixty-two Harvard Street LLC, used to be accessed directly off of the public way. You could drive to the end of Pierce Street and simply go in and out of that parking lot. And when the parking lot was reorganized by the town into the drop-off loop, the owners were forced to, to go across town property to get in and out of their parking lot, which they have done continuously for the last twenty-four years. Next, please. This, the advisory committee made three requests in, after discussing this. They asked that the town be protected against some future intensification of use. Just imagine a Burger King or something. And they wanted to have the easement, you know, take care of that. There was discussion of the Pierce School project or any other future change that the town might want to the drop-off loop, and asked that the easement allow that the town could change things as long as the access was maintained. And advisory committee asked that the easement itself in draft form be circulated prior to town meeting. These have all been addressed. Next, please. And so by unanimous vote of twenty-six to zero to zero, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on the motion as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We are ready for a vote on the motion on page five dash two. It's main motion, Article five. Voting period has commenced. The voting period is over. May I have the count, please? Motion carries by the requisite two-thirds vote. Two hundred and nineteen in favor, no opposed, and four abstentions. Article six. The motion under Article six is on page six dash five. Over to page six dash six. Moved by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. O'Neill to amend the uh, obstructions by law, as you will hear described. There are two changes in the very first line of seven point five point eleven, paragraph A, which reads, "No person shall place or cause to be placed in any street or upon", insert the words, "or across" any sidewalk, insert "or" tree lawn, which I am told is the buffer between a sidewalk and a street. So that the first line will read, "No person shall place or cause to be placed in any street or upon or across any sidewalk or tree lawn of the town, et cetera." Mr. Green, you have three minutes. Bernard.
Yes. Difficulty unmuting. Good evening. Bernard Green, speaking for a unanimous select board. Article six is proposed by the Commissioner of Department of Public Works and the ADA Coordinator to provide enforcement authority for the removal of vegetative sidewalk obstructions. It also clarifies and modernizes language in bylaw seven point five. The board agrees that the ambiguity in the existing bylaws should be rectified and that the change proposed makes sense and provide an improvement to the public way. We also agreed with the advisory committee amendments to further clarify the bylaw or the warrant article. The board feels that the changes give reasonable time periods for homeowners to remove obstructions and addresses a widespread issue in town that has been documented by the pedestrian advisory committee and our online, Brook Online social media site. This would not solve all of our sidewalk obstruction problems, such as tree roots under sidewalks resulting in obstructions. This is covered by general law, chapter six, chapter eighty-seven. But the warrant article provides a good improvement in our bylaw and will be an important change that will especially benefit the elderly and people with disabilities. A unanimous select board voted favorable action on warrant Article six, as amended by the advisory committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. After which, we'll have a couple of slides from our DPW Commissioner. Mr. O'Neill.
Uh, thank you, Don O'Neill, Senior, speaking for the advisory committee. So, no, I'm not going to get too much into it because I'm going to punt it over to Erin to get into the details of it. Erin Gallantyne from our DPW. But the advisory committee recommended favorable action on Article six, amended by the advisory committee from twenty-four, zero to one. I'm not going to repeat too much of what Bernard said, but this warrant article, it is close to my heart. And I'd really like to thank Erin Gallantyne for bringing this to town meeting. I'd also like to thank the pedestrian advisory committee for conducting that eight-to-ten-month study of vegetative conditions that they did Bernard spoke of, and the Brookline Online complaints that they reviewed and went through, which, which actually brought us to here. So my, my sister Sean O'Neill, has cerebral palsy, and folks see her riding around town in the street. And, you know, this, this article does something to help the disabled and, and provides real equity in regards to everyone being able to have access to the, to the sidewalks. Um, so I urge everyone to vote favorable action on this. And I'm going to punt it over to Erin Gallantyne so she can show the slides. Thank you.
Ms. Gallantyne.
Good evening.
Apparently, don't have any.
A moment to be able to share my, um, share my screen. But in the meantime, good evening. My name's Erin Gallantyne. I'm the Commissioner of Public Works for Brookline and co-petitioner with Sarah Kaplan, Brookline's Disability Coordinator, on warrant Article six. Presented a brief overview of the bylaw amended this evening. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And I will be available after, if there are any questions with Ms. Kaplan. Warrant Article six provides amended and clarifying language to the town's bylaw, Article seven point five point eleven, that deals with sidewalk obstructions and in particular overgrown foliage. I, I still am not able to share my screen, so I don't know if that can be amended. So sidewalk obstructions block or inhibit free and clear passage for the public. Brookline is required to meet ADA requirements for a minimum clear thirty-six inches, but we follow the National Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, which requires that sidewalks where feasible have a minimum clear width of forty-eight inches and a clear height of eighty inches to allow unobstructed passage by users of all abilities.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Oh, okay. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you have three minutes. Yes.
Thank you. Anita Johnson, Precinct A, member of the pedestrian advisory committee, speaking on my own behalf. One of Frank Carroll's goals was to make Brookline's streets and sidewalks welcoming, accessible for all people of all ages. As he constantly said, making walking safer and easier improves health, improves the environment, and promotes a more vibrant community. Walking creates a cleaner environment because people have left their cars behind. It is for this reason that climate action Brookline has endorsed Article six. As Frank Carroll said, we all, we want all of Brookline to be wonderful to walk in, easy to navigate, and convenient to access. Frank believed that safe sidewalks permitted seniors to remain in place, maintaining their good health, and maintaining their social and community activities. Article six, as you know, addresses the goal of sidewalks unobstructed by foliage. As Frank, Brookline Can, and the pedestrian advisory committee have addressed, a walking town also needs safe pedestrian street crossings, sensible timing for traffic lights, and smooth pavement surfaces. And in addition, there are benefits from shade trees and benches. The town, Brookline Can, and the pedestrian advisory committee have been working on all of these. Article six provides the town with authority to enforce its requests to property owners to remove sidewalk foliage obstruction. This is a big step toward Frank's goals. Every precinct has overgrown hedges and bushes and low-hanging branches over public sidewalks. We all remember the massive bulging hedges on Green Street, which were there for years and for years forced us onto the street, as well as the thick hedges overgrowing the sidewalk on Center Street and the bulging hedges on Canard Road, leaving only one foot of sidewalk for accessibility. The town's initiative in seeking this enforcement article is great, and we look forward to continued improvements in our walking town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frauley. Okay, she's withdrawn. Mr. Travette.
Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm David Travette, Precinct Eight, Chair of the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, not a town meeting member. As you've already heard, the pedestrian advisory committee over the past year conducted a substantial study of sidewalk obstructions in Brookline caused by vegetation. We examined, as you've heard, hundreds of complaints that had been reported by residents into Brook Online, along with the pictures and comments of residents. We performed onsite inspections of many of these. We met with DPW leadership to understand both the past and current DPW processes for dealing with such obstructions. We obtained and reviewed DPW records of addresses to which violation notice had been sent. We submitted articles to the tab, first asking that residents help us identify problematic locations, and then this spring reminding residents that it was good time of year to trim their foliage. In July, we submitted a twenty-nine-page report to the Transportation Board with our findings and recommendations. That report incorporated numerous photos, obstructions, and comments that had been submitted by town residents. Our findings include the following, as you've heard. This is indeed a widespread problem. We found instances on almost every precinct in Brookline. There are actually many more obstructions than town records would indicate, because just walking around our respective neighborhoods for months, we found many instances that as far as we could tell had never been reported. While most homeowners and property managers are responsible, in fact, do a good job, there are many that do, that do not. And in fact, it only takes a single obstruction point to deny use of an entire block sidewalk to someone like a wheelchair user. And what's important to remember is that when a hedge or a bush grows over the sidewalk, it's remaining a blockage for months and in some cases, years. That's denying Brookline residents the right to use public sidewalks, and this is particularly difficult for those using mobility devices. Clearing a vegetative obstruction once is not the end of the story. Hedges, bushes, grasses, tree limbs, they actually grow back. And so constant vigilance is necessary. And even though DPW has taken substantial and laudable steps to streamline its processes, it can take months between the time when an obstruction is first recorded and the time when there's a final deadline for it to be resolved. And for those instances that are not reported, the obstruction can last much longer. So we were shocked, in fact, when we did our investigation to discover that sidewalk obstructions caused by vegetation were not specifically prohibited in the town bylaws, nor were there any penalties imposed for violations. This is what warrant Article-
Thirty seconds, sir.
This is what warrant Article six is trying to address. Brookline has adopted a complete streets policy, but obstructed sidewalks are far from complete. We recommend favorable action on warrant Article six to help address these issues in keeping with Brookline's values of accessibility and enjoyment of the outside. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Stone? Rebecca Stone?
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I'm very strongly-
Glory.
I'm sorry, Rebecca Stone, town meeting member from Precinct Three. Very strongly in favor of this article and really appreciate everything that has been done to, to bring it here. I just had a question for Ms. Gallantyne, who I believe was interrupted in the middle of her presentation, and I would love to see those slides. But my question is that sometimes, at least on, on my street, in at least three cases, the obstruction to the sidewalk, bringing the sidewalk to far below thirty-six inches, much less the much larger ADA, is because of the, the tree lawn. It's, and I know that Mr. Green referred to a bylaw that has to do with the tree lawn and roots. But there are some cases where the sidewalk is down to twenty-six or twenty-four inches, and it's because of the street trees. And I know we all value the street trees incredibly. It's a huge, it's a huge added value in Brookline, but I wondered what the, what the town's policy was when the, when the tree lawn itself, when the street tree itself is the obstruction to, to adequate and equitable access. Thank you.
Ms. Gallantyne.
Good evening. Erin Gallantyne, Commissioner of Public Works. So as select person Green mentioned, the, this amendment does not deal specifically with street trees that are regulated under Mass. General Law, Chapter eighty-seven. However, that said, the Department of Public Works is very mindful of impediments due to heaving sidewalks, you know, associated with tree roots. So we are looking at options for corrective measures that make it easier to go over tree roots, and we're also looking at different types of technologies related to new trees that are planted, in particular in commercial areas and around sidewalks.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Clint Richmond, Precinct Six. Just a quick clarifying question. Most of the discussion here has been on vegetation, but there are other objects mentioned in the article. I don't know if those are meant to be addressed in this or going to be addressed in regulation, but I was particularly wondering about things like, you know, trash that's left on the sidewalk or a bike that someone parks. And many of these objects may not be the fault of the property owner, and I was wondering how that may be addressed, or should I just wait for regulation in the future? Thank you.
Well, the article does call for, covers objects and material, which I think is what you're asking about, is it not? Ms. Priestley.
Hi, Zena Priestley, Precinct Four. So my question is, how about the, I know that you said it was forty-eight inches that we were going to go by of the federal. Is that mandated on just one side of the sidewalk? I know it's a little awkward, but I know that down on, near Downs Field, half this, so what, on the left side, it's a lot thinner than on the right side. Does just one side of the street have to be provided forty-eight inches? What is your thoughts on that?
Ms. Gallantyne.
Thank you for the question, Erin Gallantyne. So the American with Disabilities Act requires thirty-six inches. We look to provide forty-eight wherever we can, and that would be on both sides of the street. So it's, it's not just looking at one side or the other. And there are certain areas, if you look at commercial areas, et cetera, where beyond forty-eight inches is actually far more comfortable for the public to traverse. So we aren't looking at just one side of the street. We're really looking broadly at the full public way.
While you're at it, Ms. Gallantyne, Mr. Richmond didn't feel that I adequately responded to him, so if you recall his question, please respond to it.
Yes, indeed. The bylaw currently actually does address items that are placed onto the public way. So that would include trash receptacles. It could include, sometimes there are cars that are parked up on the public way. So it includes really any object that inhibits free and clear passage and enables the Department of Public Works to sort of work with the offender to remedy that condition.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote on Article six. The motion in the middle of Articles, page six dash five, over to page six dash six. Voting period has started. Voting period has started. Time is up. May I have the count, please? Okay, that brings us to what we would ordinarily, we'd ordinarily, at this point, take up the special town meeting within the regular fall special. But the Advisory Committee is engaged in a a long and complicated editing process. And Mr. Sandman would, I think, like to move that we defer the second special town meeting to tomorrow night. Mr. Sandman, you want to make that motion and justify it, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Sandman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, and Advisory Committee Chair. Indeed, as moderator said, we have just finished, in fact, at 7:04 PM. A couple of modifications and amendment to the budget amendment. He has not had a chance to review it to make sure that it's within scope, although, well, I'll leave it to him to say that it is or isn't. And we haven't had a chance to get it out to you to review. I think you'll find that it's not substantive in the sense that it doesn't actually change anything tremendously, but I do think that it's important to get it out and have people take a look at it before we try to explain it in a hurried fashion this evening. So I move to defer STM two to tomorrow night.
I'll accept that motion. The motion is to postpone consideration of the second special town meeting relating to budget adjustments and the Spiegel indemnity to first thing tomorrow evening. Motion to defer STM two. Motion has been seconded. And the voting period has commenced. Yes, if you are willing to postpone the consideration of this article, of this single article. No, if you're opposed. Yeah. Yep. And you'll have about four seconds after the clock runs down. But get your votes in early. Okay, the voting period has terminated. Motion carries by a vote of 199 in favor, 10 opposed, and 15 abstentions. Mr. Spritz, you have a point of order? S H P R I T Z.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, Nathan Spritz, Precinct 16. I had only tried to get in soon enough to see if perhaps Mr. Sandman wanted to postpone STM two for yet another day, just in case your review proved that it was not okay. But we've already voted, so I withdraw.
Thank you. So we now proceed to Articles seven through nine. We will have a single debate on these three articles. And various speakers will address various articles and various aspects of the three articles. The motions before you are as follows. Under Article seven, the motion is found on page 7-3. Move that the town amend the number of licenses allowable for marijuana retailers in the manner set forth in the underlined section. It's moved by Mr. Fernandez and seconded by Mr. Van Skoyak. The, Mr. Rosenthal, you have a point of order? We have already deferred, postponed the special town meeting, and we're not going to revisit that issue. But make your point of order.
Well, I was just too late in the chat to make my point of order. I wanted to be heard on that issue.
Well, you can't, it's too late now. We've already voted. The, going back to the motions offered under Article seven, the main motion on page 7-3, there is a motion to refer the subject matter of this article, which is found on supplement number one, page one. Moved by Ms. Silbaugh and seconded by Mr. Spritz. Article eight, the main motion is on supplement number one, page one, moved by Ms. Park, seconded by Mr. Somani. Article nine, the main motion is found on page 9-13. Moved again by Mr. Somani and seconded by Ms. Park. I have to edit this motion because it's, the motion was cast in the form of an article and not a motion. So if you'll turn to page 9-13, in the middle of the page, it says introduction and to see if the town will resolve to that. Lead-in should read, voted that the town requests the moderator, et cetera. And on page 9-16, please delete the phrase or act on anything relative thereto. Those are the edits applicable to the main motion. There is a motion to refer this article, the subject matter of this article as well. It's made by Mr. Ananian, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. It's found in supplement one, page one. To refer the matter to the Advisory Committee on Public Health, Council on Public Health, I'm sorry. All right, against that background, we'll start the debate. And there are a great many people who oppose Article seven and are in favor of one variety of Article eight and nine or the other. There are a far fewer number who take the opposite position, that is, they are, they favor Article seven and oppose Articles eight and nine. Because of the balance, we're going to start with the first category, that is, those who are opposed to Article seven and in favor of eight or nine or the referral under nine. And I call on our BU faculty, Professor Silbaugh and Albuquerque, who will have eight minutes. Kate Silbaugh.
Hi, and I have slides, please. Does someone? Just want to make sure that the, can you guys hear me?
Yes. We don't have slides.
Yes, I got a confirmation that you do have them. If you let me share, I can share my own screen.
We can't, we can't screen share in that manner, but we'll look for your slides. You got them? Okay. Okay, you can start. Ms. Silbaugh?
Waiting to see this. I just want to see if the slide up because the presentation a lot, there you go, thank you. Kate Silbaugh, Precinct One, for referral on seven. We don't have equity shops in Brookline in the state or across the country. Why? Because the cost of getting through the process is so high, and there's no regular banking and credit for this industry. That favors big firms, and Warren Article seven only tweaks the least of the barriers. As select board discovered when they tried to rework their policy, licensing policy alone can't keep big firms out of the game. And if they are in it, they will win it. The referral asks us to seek other pressure points to discourage large firms from choosing us and to promote equity in the existing market. I want to connect three points. One, the process is uniquely expensive. Two, the select board's policy is leaky on the equity definition. And three, therefore, Brookline will get big firms from Warren Article seven. State law makes this a costly two to three-year process to licensing. It takes $1 to $2 million conservatively. For one thing, you have to get and then carry a lease the entire time. That hurdle is the mustard line at the beginning of this timeline slide. You must have that to even reach Warren Article seven's moment, which is the red line, the HCA. And then the bulk of the remaining time is spent burning cash through the regulatory process. Cash that can't come from traditional banking and cash that is not a problem for big firms. The banking problem is actually big firms' competitive advantage. Next slide, please. Second, the select board's policy permits big white-owned firms to gain the SEP training program. Imagine you have a promising equity applicant represented by that purple arrow. So we're all so hopeful at the start about that applicant. Most of those hopeful equity candidates end up being the purple arrow. They don't ever reach that red HCA line because they can't get and hold the lease. Above that, there's another equity firm with some startup money that does get the lease and does get our HCA. But there's still a very long way to go. And as the Globe Editorial said, much more significant hurdles to get across that white space to a shop opening. The majority of equity applicants who are like the blue arrows don't get through that white space because of the cash burn at the top. But on this slide, no one gets there. And so fans of Warren Article seven might say, well, give that blue arrow candidate a shot. What's the harm? Next slide, please. The harm is that big, big firm at the top will push through to the end. We will get big firms misusing this process if we authorize these licenses before we lower the costs downstream. The select board policy allows the licenses to go to that green line firm, or the green arrow is a big white-owned hedge fund firm, and it just had to hire one SEP employee to be the applicant. The select board policy invites that because SEP wasn't designed as a license category. But the green arrow absolutely qualifies for these licenses under Warren Article seven. If you authorize these licenses without first lowering the cost of entry, the entire journey, you're just inviting the green firm to enter and to win. So then can't we just refuse those licenses to the green arrow firm and wait for blue arrow firm with discretion? That would invite green arrow to sue because big green arrow firm does absolutely meet the select board criteria. We can study ways to make it easier for equity firms and others pathways to equity. You already voted once to study this back in 2019. Please vote yes again on the Silbaugh referral on Warren Article seven to study cannabis equity in town. And if that fails, vote no on Warren Article seven. Thank you.
Ms. Albuquerque?
And Albuquerque, Precinct One, for a referral on seven. I want to speak for a moment about equity diversity. The Warren Article eight and nine proponent team is diverse. And we think this team is reflective of our community in that we are concerned about the impact of retail cannabis on our youth. If you vote for Warren Article eight, it will not remove retail cannabis from Brookline. In fact, we already have four stores, one of which is the largest in the US. The question of access to retail cannabis has already been affirmed by the voters. What is being questioned in these articles is the expansion of cannabis beyond the four licenses that the voters believe they were agreeing to when they voted in 2016. A referral on seven and the yes vote on Article eight takes the guesswork out of the equation of expansion as we take it to the voters to decide in May. There are new findings from the scientific literature, as you are going to hear from the Warren Article nine petitioners. Recent studies at peer-reviewed journals show that more stores normalize cannabis for our youth and them having positive use of it, which leads to more use. Research indicates that one in six students develop dependency on cannabis if they start using under the age of 18 years old. As a BGS graduate said, and I have seen it firsthand, they do use fake IDs. New studies also show the impact of cannabis on the developing brain, which causes serious problems with memory and concentration, increased aggression, car accidents, use of other drugs or alcohol, risky sexual behaviors, and worsening of underlying mental health conditions, including increased risk of psychosis and suicide thinking. I also want to see real diversity in Brookline businesses. In May, we approved eight delivery licenses to be issued exclusively to equity applicants. This should be successful because the capital requirements for entry into the delivery market are so much lower than these retail licenses. Town meeting made that vote, but the select board still needs to succeed at issuing those licenses so that our actions are not morally symbolic. Finally, if we as a community are committed to diversity in our businesses, we can do more without putting the health of teenagers at risk. For any retail operation, from game shops to clothing stores or coffee shops, we can create equity programs by waiving building permit and licensee fees for commercial development, giving discounts for commercial taxes for some period, providing discounted access to professionals for business plan development as examples. A referral on seven charges the moderators committee with considering ways to achieve real diversity in our business community. I believe we too reflect the diversity in this community. And I am very worried that we use equity and diversity as the reason to open more cannabis stores at the cost of putting in serious risk the health of the youth generation of all races and social economic backgrounds. These teenagers can see that we as a community have welcomed cannabis to the neighborhood, although we have restricted tobacco sales in Brookline. This makes every parent's job so much harder. To rationalize the sequence of decisions we are confronting, please vote referral on seven. And if we vote on the other line, main motion, please vote no. And the yes on Warren Articles eight and nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Somani. Alok. A L O K.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alok Somani, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five, and co-petitioner of Articles eight and nine. Good evening. It's been several years since recreational marijuana came to market in Brookline. Many people voted to legalize because we wanted to end the war on harmful drugs, provide economic opportunity for those who have been harmed, and we wanted to replace the black market with a new industry that pays taxes. These were good goals, and they still are. But sometimes even the best intentions have unintended consequences. In which case, it probably makes sense to pause, think about it, and make adjustments. Tonight, we are saying that it's time to pause, carefully craft policy that delivers our goals, including social equity, without unintentionally harming the health of our town. We should recognize that by referring Article seven or failing that voting no, we are not rejecting social equity as a goal. We are not pulling up the drawbridge and denying entrepreneurs of color access to a booming industry. As drafted, Warren Article seven is a drawbridge to nowhere. And let's not forget, we don't need two new, two new stores to invite minority entrepreneurs to participate. This past spring, for example, we approved, the town meeting approved four delivery licenses and four courier licenses. And we set those aside exclusively for social equity applicants for the next three years. And more tangibly, the town has entered into an agreement with the Brookline Community Foundation to fund racial equity grants with money raised from the 3% impact fee that is paid by the marijuana retailers as part of their host community agreements. In fiscal '21, we contributed $300,000 to that racial equity grant program. And we have allocated, I believe this year, we are asking to allocate an additional $200,000 for fiscal year '22. So we are making progress towards helping minority entrepreneurs. And we're doing it in a way that is benefiting more than just And we're doing it in a way that is benefiting more than just one retail license holder. Please vote to refer article seven, or if that fails, please vote no. Article eight, article eight is about slowing the growth of licenses, but it's not a hard cap. It allows for the number of licenses to increase, but it slows that rate of increase. We are in this very complicated world of ballot questions because of how the state law works. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to go there, but here's what seems important to me. Article eight is about checking in with the voters. When Brookline opted in, it was done by a townwide vote via a ballot question. A yes vote on article eight gives the decision to the voters. The voters decided on the number of licenses. If the select board wants to change that, we should ask the voters to decide. Please note, thanks to town council and all the time and effort that was spent in discussion with committees and boards, article eight fully complies with state law. And by the way, the cost of adding this to the ballot is de minimis. It's two to three hundred dollars. Please vote yes on article eight. We should let the voters decide this question. Later, we will hear from speakers who will share their professional expertise and experience to help us understand what is at risk and why we should pause licensing until we understand emerging data. Article nine asks for a moderators committee that is an independent team of experts with a diverse and broad set of expertise. We want many points of view to be represented. And we would like to task that group with considering the town's policy goals for licensing marijuana establishments. In October, the select board referred article nine to the cannabis mitigation committee. To their credit, just yesterday, they changed their mind and referred it to the advisory council on public health. This is a huge step in the right direction. Because the DPH and the ACPH are uniquely qualified to frame and carry out with complete independence a study that is appropriately funded and that will help all of us better understand the public health impacts. Here's the thing, we should prioritize and fund regardless of whether there's a study committee. And the funding should not be conditioned on choosing a select board committee instead of a moderators committee. So why is a moderators committee needed? Because ideally, the committee is a diverse set of experts. Public health, medical health, cannabis proponents, cannabis critics, legal experts, business experts, educators, PTO students needs to be diverse and it needs to have all the different views represented. The study committee would incorporate the work that the DPH and the ACPH would do. Please vote yes on the advisory committee's version of article nine. Next, you will hear testimony from physicians who practice in Brookline. These are doctors who are qualified to understand emerging medical studies. They will share what the data is indicating and they will share what they are experiencing in their practices. We will also hear testimony from a parent who has children in our public schools. Her voice represents the overwhelming majority of voices that I am hearing from the many precinct five residents who are asking us to pause and consider the data and to vote, to vote to refer article seven. And you will hear also from a high school student. Please vote yes on the advisory committee's version of article nine. Thank you.
Yes, now, Mr. Somani, you have less than ten minutes to go in your sixteen minute time block and five speakers to follow, so you might want to keep that in mind and disciplining your speakers. Dr. Vermani, V I R M A N I, V for victory.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dr. Anjani Vermani. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I would like to speak in support of Warren article eight and nine and who asked you to refer on Warren article seven. I am a Brookline resident of twenty seven years, a parent and a practicing internal medicine physician in the Boston area. My area focus has been college age students for the last ten years. I would like to express my concerns regarding Warren article seven, which proposes to add two new licenses to the four that we already have. I've worked with college age students for over ten years. And in the last several years, I've had a seen a significant rise in marijuana use disorder in young people who are both in college and in high school, including Brookline High School. I would like to share some information for you from the most recent medical literature. This information might help to explain what physicians are seeing, what I'm seeing in my practice and what you might be seeing in the community in terms of the use of marijuana in young people. The important point to make is that marijuana research will always lag behind current trends. So we need to keep that in mind when we see current studies. That's why I vote for a pause or I recommend you vote for a pause to study the information further. The first data point I'd like to refer to is the CDC fact sheet that Ms. Albuquerque referred to, which showed that one in ten marijuana users will become addicted. And if use is done or started before age eighteen, one in six can become addicted. This is an astonishing statistic that bears repeating, and that's why I repeat it to you today. The second point is that marijuana potency is significantly increased compared to what we had seen in the use in the nineteen seventies when it was more prevalent previously. Marijuana potency and the use of oils and vaping is now reaching up to seventy percent potency. Marijuana that is herbal is about twenty percent and marijuana in the seventies was eight to ten percent potent. So the potency has a significant impact on young people. There is significant increased use of vaping in grade schools from age eighth grade, tenth grade and twelfth grade. So with this vaping increase that we're seeing across the board, there's significant impacts on the developing brain. As you all may be aware, the brain continues to develop, especially in the prefrontal cortex, which helps us with the maturation of our decision making and complex behaviors. So with the marijuana use, we are worried about impacts in the brain maturation. In my practice, what I see of college age students, specifically the younger ones, is this cycle of use that they have a lack of awareness. Typically, I'll see a young college age student, often a male, who is struggling in school and also coping with depression or marijuana, depression and anxiety. They're using marijuana to help them cope, but they're not aware that the daily drug use is impacting their ability to make social relationships and to be successful in school. So this leads to a vicious cycle where they do poorly in school and then turn again to marijuana use. And this cycle is something that we did not see prior to the last ten years. This is something new since the legalization of marijuana and the prevalence of marijuana has increased significantly in the last ten years. So although many people previously believed marijuana was not harmful or addictive, our data suggests otherwise. So I would ask you to vote to refer on Warren article seven and yes on Warren article eight and nine. Thank you.
Dr. Levin. L A V I N. Yes. You have five minutes left in your time block and four speakers, so act accordingly. You have to unmute yourself, Dr. Levin.
Marijuana is the most popular illicit substance used in the United States and adolescents and young adults are among the highest users of marijuana. Various states have legalized marijuana for medical purposes and or decriminalized recreational marijuana use. Although these policies apply to the use of marijuana by adults, they have affected adolescent illicit use of marijuana by increasing marketing, availability and access. Longitudinal studies have shown that changes in legal status impact risk perception. The national trend of increased rates of adolescent marijuana use is clear. Teens teens do not consider marijuana to be a harmful drug. Some believe it's natural, but not all natural plants are good for you, correct? Take tobacco, for example, and several billion dollars in healthcare costs as a result. With the growing popularity of vaping devices and other ways to use marijuana that are smokeless, teens have had easier access to use marijuana. As teens have started vaping THC, nearly four percent of twelfth graders in the United States say they vape THC daily. An estimated seventeen percent of youth who use marijuana develop a cannabis use disorder. Adolescent marijuana use also predicts a twofold increase of using other substances. Cannabis addiction is real and for anyone in this board to dismiss this is very telling of the lack of understanding of the real problem. Marijuana has serious side effects. Cannabis causes various neurologic issues, including intoxication that may cause acute psychosis. It takes the body two hours to feel effects of marijuana. Therefore, adolescent patients are more likely to use larger quantities of marijuana, which increases the risk of acute intoxication. About two thirds of emergency room visits with marijuana intoxication in the United States include teens between twelve and seventeen years old. In addition, adolescent use of marijuana predicts up to twofold increased risk of developing psychosis and schizophrenia in adults. This finding has been replicated multiple times in large studies controlling for multiple factors. Because the adolescent brain is still developing, adolescent marijuana use may be associated with enhanced negative effects of the brain structure. Marijuana has been shown to cause impairment in attention, concentration, decision making, impulsivity and working memory. There is a strong evidence that marijuana users have less academic success and later in life anxiety and depression. As the movement of legalization continues to expand, pediatric and adolescent mental health crisis continues. Pediatricians are being called on to provide care to youth who are at risk for potential adverse individual and public health outcomes. Understanding these trends among youth is an essential step towards developing a healthier policy. I support articles eight and nine and referred on article seven. Thank you.
You, Dr. Reich. R E I C H.
Hi, I'm Dr. Sarah Reich. I'm a longtime resident of Brookline as well as have three kids in the schools and I'm a pediatrician. I work with Dr. Levin and I'm, Dr. Levin spoke for both of us, but I just wanted to ask you to refer seven and vote yes on eight and nine.
Thank you. Tiffany Rennie. R I N N E. You have one minute and twenty five seconds.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Rena. I'm a parent of four children. I've been living in Brookline for fourteen years. I've been extremely involved in Brookline Public Schools as a PTO chair, member of the Peer School Council, Brookline Parent Education Network. I'm with a school teacher for years. If I were looking for a home now and found out that Brookline had not only four dispensaries, but were thinking of adding two more, it would definitely influence my decision on whether this was a place I'd want to raise my children. We came here for good public schools and for family community. This year, we even decided to pull our sixteen year old daughter out of the Brookline schools in part due to the culture around marijuana. I speak not only for my husband and I, but for many parents I've spoken with. We're opposed to giving to new licenses from marijuana dispensaries. We strongly support social equity, but think there are more effective ways to achieve that goal in ways that don't adversely affect the health of the children in our community. We are very concerned about the high marijuana rate here and think we should stop and evaluate the implications of what we're doing before we go any deeper. I've worked with teenagers for years in Brookline Watertown Newton. Between my own children, my connection with their friends and these other teens I work with on a regular basis, I have seen an increase in marijuana use. I have asked some teens recently how, if at all, the marijuana dispensaries has affected their views on weed. And without a prompt from me, one of the answer was that it has normalized it. They see regular people lined up to buy marijuana and it makes them, makes it seem acceptable, not a big deal, normal. Is this the message we want to be giving our youth? I think we all agree that it is not. So let's stop here and think deliberately about what we should do next. I speak for many Brookline parents when I say that we are opposed to warrant seven or in favor of Warren articles eight and nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Raul Fernandez, select board vice chair, speaking for a unanimous select board in favor of Warren article seven. My colleague Miramash Kanazi will speak next on articles eight and nine. And our colleague John Ben Skoyak will follow with additional comments on all three articles. We're also joined by Jonathan Simpson from our town council's office, who can address any legal questions, and deputy town administrator Melissa Goff, who can address financial and implementation questions. First of all, I want to be clear that the select board is united and standing behind this article and the complementary policy which seeks to remedy the existing inequities in our local cannabis licensing. Notwithstanding reasonable hesitance to add any additional licenses at this point, we're glad to see that much of the conversation in the lead up to this vote has been about how we get equity right. Back in twenty eighteen, the select board advisory committee and town meeting collectively missed the mark by developing a model for cannabis licensing that did not consider racial and socioeconomic equity in its criteria. We instead created a first come, first served policy for the four licenses that we were bound to distribute by statute as a community that voted yes on recreational cannabis legalization. While that policy mitigated any political favoritism in distributing those licenses, it was unfortunately void of any scrutiny with regard to equity. As you've heard me say before, instituting policies that promote racial equity is essential to undoing centuries of systemic racism. Past federal, state and local policies have led to dramatic racial disparities, including in financial security and generational wealth. Our current cannabis policy has only exacerbated those disparities. This select board, with all of our political differences, has been united in pushing our four cannabis license holders on setting higher targets for hiring from communities of color and diversifying their own ownership. We've been more successful at the former with newer license holders at the unrelenting behest of board members than with the guidance of our chief diversity officer, Dr. Lloyd Gellino, delivering more robust equity and diversity plans with respect to hiring and other measures, which has raised expectations for prior license holders when they return to have their licenses renewed. But sadly, we have little leverage and have had little success in changing the ownership of those businesses, which are all overwhelmingly overwhelmingly or exclusively owned by already wealthy white men. Unfortunately, we cannot turn back the clock or change the ownership standards for these four licenses. In the reality that we find ourselves in today, if we want the ownership of cannabis license holders in Brookline to become more racially and socioeconomically diverse, that means in part adding new licenses. Of course, crafting a policy to guarantee that the owner or majority of owners are, for example, black or Latinx, is not possible. Federal law allows for us to create the conditions that are most likely to ensure that applicants of color are well represented in the overall pool of applicants, but they do not currently allow us to select applicants solely based on race. The state legislature and Cannabis Control Commission, facing the same limitation, created two programs intended to foster a more diverse applicant pool. Economic empowerment and social equity status. Economic empowerment applicants must meet one of three majority ownership criteria. Criteria which include majority ownership by quote individuals from black, African American, Hispanic or Latino, Latino descent, end quote. While that program is currently closed to new applicants, there are some previously approved applicants that may be a fit for Brookline. The Cannabis Control Commission has focused its recent efforts on its social equity program, which provides technical assistance to eligible applicants, such as those who reside in areas disproportionately impacted by the criminalization of marijuana. Areas we know are commonly those where many people of color reside. Of the one hundred and thirty five applicants approved for the most recent social equity cohort, nearly half are black and another sixteen percent represent other communities of color. Twenty seven point five percent of the applicants are white. The policy developed by the select board in consultation with town staff, including town council, requires applicants to pass through one of these two doors. Economic empowerment or social equity to even be considered for the two licenses we're discussing today. That's the first way we're working to ensure a diverse applicant pool, but that's not all we're doing. Because these two licenses are above the statutory minimum, we have more flexibility through the administrative process to take the time to develop a deep pool of ownership applicants, which includes substantial representation of people of color. What does that mean? First, unlike our past process, we're not binding ourselves to a first come, first served model. Meaning those with the social and financial capital to move fast. Excuse me. Hit the space bar in here. Okay, we'll start that part again. First, unlike our past process, we're not binding ourselves to a first come, first served model. Meaning those with the social and financial capital to move fast and first won't have as much of an edge on those who don't. Second, it means we can create a process with a long enough horizon that allows the time necessary for a diverse applicant pool to develop. Third, this process allows for more robust public engagement and community input into who should be selected for these licenses. And fourth, the board is not bound to approve both, one or any licenses. We can say no, start over and get it right. It's through the administrative process that we'll be able to create the conditions most favorable to meeting our racial, socioeconomic and other equity goals. I do want to say one other thing. The concerns about lack of capital for potential entrepreneurs of color that have been raised by the Boston Globe and Town Meeting by the Boston Globe and Town Meeting members are a real issue that we need to address. Should this warrant article be approved tonight, as we await approval from the Attorney General, I think the Select Board has to discuss additional ways to remove barriers and level the playing field, whether it be through technical assistance or other assistance or other means of support for entrepreneurs of color. I'm looking forward to speaking with my colleagues about that soon. In the meantime, we have the opportunity tonight to move forward with a sensible and legally defensible approach that meets our shared equity goals, with the ability to further amend our policy so that it provides for the most favorable outcomes. With that, the unanimous Select Board recommends favorable action on warrant Article seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ashkenazi.
Thank you very much. Miram Ashkenazi, speaking on behalf of the unanimous Select Board recommending no action on warrant Article eight. The Select Board does not support the efforts to round down for the purposes of calculating the number of marijuana retail licenses. The state requires a bylaw to be submitted to the voters for approval if the town wants to limit the number of marijuana retailers to fewer than 20% of the number of liquor licenses issued within the city. Rounding down would drop us below the 20%. Therefore, we would be required to hold a town-wide ballot initiative on the number of marijuana businesses as stated above. We already voted on this. The town voted on this issue. The Board feels that the electorate made their decision, and there have been no significant changes that would necessitate another town-wide referendum, and we see no reason to question the validity of the initial vote. Town Meeting carefully debated this issue for a long time and then set regulations that provided the town with the current structure retailers operate under. The town has already issued the four licenses, as you have heard before. So rounding down will not impact the current licensing structure. For this reason, the Select Board unanimously voted to vote no on warrant Article eight. Shall I continue for warrant Article nine, Moderator Gatsi?
Sure, go ahead. You've got a 15-minute time block.
All right. So I am still Miram Ashkenazi. I'm still speaking on behalf of unanimous Select Board recommending the referral of warrant Article nine to the Advisory Committee on Public Health, which is better suited to evaluate the medical studies called for in this particular warrant article. Article warrant, excuse me, warrant Article nine is a petitioned resolution that seeks to create new marijuana study committee to address policy concerns and other matters related to the recreational marijuana industry. I am the current, the current Chair of the Cannabis Mitigation Committee, and we discussed this in detail. The Select Board finds the merits of several of the issues fought forward in this warrant article, but strongly supports referring it to the Advisory Committee on Public Health as this really falls under their area of expertise. Epidemiologic and public health study is complex, and if we want to be leaders in the field in this area, we need to make sure we are conducting studies and rigorously evaluating the data appropriately. As much as I appreciate the desire to have community involvement in this kind of public health evaluation, we need public health expertise. It's for this reason a unanimous Select Board voted favorable action to refer this subject matter to the Department, to the Advisory Committee, to the Department of Public Health, and I strongly suggest that you do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Van Skoyak.
Good evening. I'm John Van Skoyak of the Select Board. Article seven requires Town Meeting members to do more than the usual amount of soul searching. We all care for our kids. We don't wish to see them harmed, ever. So the alarm being raised about two additional licenses for adult-use cannabis retail businesses is very real to us, but it requires us to look more closely at the facts. Fact number one: marijuana purchase and use under the age of 21 has always been illegal, and it will be just as illegal with six stores as with four. Fact number two: despite laws against purchase and use under age 21, and despite education campaigns and the best efforts of teachers and parents, teenagers get their hands on cannabis and use it. The Brookline Public Health Department would love to gather data, not just on patterns of cannabis use among young people, but also among adults. Let's fund those studies, and the pathway to do so exists under the Ananian Article nine referral motion that you will consider after we vote on Article seven. But please, no double standards. Where were the urgent calls for more research when licenses one, two, three, and four were granted? Why is it only now when licenses five, licensees five and six, the social justice and economic empowerment licensees, are the ones seeking to do business? Why is it only now that more study is being offered as a roadblock to a just and fair outcome to Brookline's licensing process? Fact number three: even if we cap licenses at four, the number of easily accessed retail cannabis establishments will increase, not decrease. That's because Boston and Newton don't dance to the tune in Brookline. To cite one example, just days ago, the Mayor of Newton reported on the five additional retail businesses soon to open in her city, in addition to the three already open. One of them, Green Lady, is a woman and minority-owned business. Boston Two is adding social equity and economic empowerment applicants to their mix of cannabis businesses. Will Brookline close the door on social equity and economic empowerment applicants while our neighbors are opening the door? That's what's at stake in Article seven. And now let me do my own soul searching. Explaining why I am so passionately in favor of Article seven requires being honest about myself. Here's the thing I remember most about my adolescent and young adult experience when I briefly tried marijuana, just as most of you did, I imagine. Back then, just as today, there were classmates who used marijuana regularly. They were predominantly white and privileged, but the classmates who they turned to to supply the marijuana were often non-white and non-privileged. When my classmates were caught in the act, guess which group, the users or the dealers, was more likely to be suspended or expelled from school? Guess which group was more likely to suffer harassment by local law enforcement, while the other group was granted leniency and no permanent blot on their record? Guess which group, the dealers with no resources or the privileged users with their dads who went to Ivy League schools, was more likely to sail through the college admissions process? I don't have to tell you the answer. So fast forward to the present. I was elected to the Select Board in 2020, and soon I noticed the same old pattern when it came to the rollout of legal cannabis in Massachusetts and in Brookline. One outcome for the white and privileged, another outcome for the non-white and non-privileged. Along with my colleagues on the Select Board, I committed myself to doing something about it. The result is Article seven. I will proudly vote yes. The social equity and economic empowerment candidates who will benefit from the passage of Article seven remind me of the non-white, non-privileged people I've witnessed, get the short end of the stick for my entire lifetime. They've suffered real harm. They've had to watch repeatedly while white and, the white and privileged come out ahead, and they are told repeatedly to wait their turn. And as if that's not enough, if I might add, they were told tonight by speakers you heard on the other side of this issue that they should settle. They should settle for courier licenses. Why should they settle for a different class of license, which one of them, by the way, has described as crumbs? Being told to settle is a pattern that has to stop. I urge my fellow Town Meeting members, don't tell licensees number five and licensee number six to once again wait their turn. They've waited long enough. Do the right thing. Vote yes on Article seven. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Ridraho. You have five minutes.
Well, that's hard to follow. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Carlos Ridraho, Precinct 14, speaking for the Advisory Committee. Mr. Moderator, before I begin, I would like to note an amendment to our report and the combined reports on page seven dash four in the section Financial Impact. It should say, adding additional marijuana retailers licenses would increase town revenue, town tax revenue, and additional staff and enforcement costs may be covered by fees. Thank you. Okay. Article seven proposes to increase the number of retail marijuana licenses from the current six, sorry, sorry, from the current four to six, and it directs the additional licenses to be issued to equity applicants as determined by the Select Board. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on this Silba referral, and if that vote fails, it recommends no action on Article seven for three major reasons. First, Article seven relies on the Cannabis Control Commission's social equity status designation to determine who qualifies for these licenses. The social equity status designation does not require that the equity applicant have any ownership in the retail establishment. Such deficiency makes Brookline vulnerable to an equity facade by non-equity cannabis operator who only needs to employ a single social equity program participant to serve as a licensed applicant. This means that any of Brookline's existing retail marijuana operators might, might have qualified for an equity license if Article seven were in effect when they applied. Town Council has advised that where Town Meeting to authorize licenses, these licenses, but they were, they were then reserved for most, for the most genuine equity applicant as determined by the Select Board. The town would risk a legal challenge by non-equity-owned cannabis firm that meets the formal equity definition in the Select Board's policy, yet for whom a license would be withheld. The second reason for no action has to do with the concerns raised by our medical, our own medical community. During multiple public hearings on Article seven, the Advisory Committee heard testimony from medical and mental health professionals practicing in Brookline who cited a growing body of scientific evidence that today's higher THC cannabis has a detrimental effect on developing brains. Doctors testified that these new studies may explain the uptick in cannabis use disorders they are seeing in their Brookline practices. Importantly, Brookline's Advisory Council on Public Health recommends no action on Article seven due to the open questions about the relationship among availability, advertisement, and the increase in usage among adolescents. The third action for, the third reason for no action relates to the lack of research and public involvement in the development of the Select Board's policy, most recently amended without benefit of the, of public hearing or input. Two years ago, in response to a Select Board recommendation, Town Meeting voted to have the Select Board's Licensing Review Committee assess the regulatory basis of our town's failure to issue licenses to equity applicants, among other topics. The Licensing Review Committee's study would have considered local and state, national, local, state, and national policies that could be effective in creating more equitable access to Brookline's marijuana industry and would have allowed for robust public input and feedback on policy development. The Select Board never convened this own committee despite Town Meeting's vote. The Advisory Committee commends the Select Board for recognizing the lack of diversity and social equity among the current marijuana retailer licenses and urges the Board to make issuing, to make issuing the eighth delivery license, licenses approved by Town Meeting and devote completely, devoted completely to equity applicants a high priority. As the Advisory Committee, and as the Advisory Committee by a vote of nineteen to four to two urges Town Meeting to refer Article seven to a moderators committee to study the conditions in Brookline that make it challenging for equity applicants to enter a town, the town's cannabis market. Make recommendations to reduce the difficulties and identify other ways to increase diversity. If the referral fails, then for the reasons mentioned earlier, the vulnerability of our current equity policy to gaming by non-equity-owned operators, their uncertain health consequences for our young residents, and the lack of policy analysis and public input, the Advisory Committee recommends no action on Article seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. You have three minutes, and there are a couple of motions for the question, which I'm not going to allow for the time being. We'll hear from several more speakers, so hold your fire. Mr. Fisher?
Andrew. Thank you. Thank you. Andrew Fisher, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. And I'm a bit troubled by the fact that it seems like we've been through this over and over again, and we still have people who are trying to, trying to renew a battle that we've already had and won. In addition to our Advisory Committee, which is in fact FinCom or Financial Committee, we have the EDAB, a group that's dedicated to economic development, developing businesses and other sources of revenue, because that's a need for the town. On this warrant, we have an article seeking to require petitioners moving an article to submit a statement of economic impact. Since COVID, our concerns for economic stability have increased. Cannabis licenses have been the one singular and substantial new source of revenue that this town has seen in the years that I've been on Town Meeting, which are starting to accumulate. The citizens of this town and of the Commonwealth have spoken more than once. There is a desire to allow the legal sale and distribution of cannabis. We don't need to check that with the voters again. Yet opponents continue trying to stop a train that's left the station. We had a glitch with the first, opening of the first shop in Brookline Village. It was the first shop, not just in the town, but one of the first in the state, and there were big crowds and there were issues. They've, and when something new comes, there are often problems. That's been worked out. The second shop opened in Coolidge Corner. I'm unaware of any complaints or of any merchants complaining, and in fact, my personal interactions with merchants have been that, have been that they've appreciated the increase in, in foot traffic and business to their stores. There's no problems. There's two more now in Commonwealth Avenue, serving Boston University and the Boston Community. Again, no problems, and we have increased revenue flows.
You have one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There, there's no data that anyone's spoken of increased use among youth, increased arrests, increased evidence of sales, or any evidence of sales to minors, any, in fact, the anecdotal evidence of the experts have not, have avoided saying anything about increase of use. There's no public show of any, of any of the stores. They're discreet. They don't advertise publicly. We have nowhere near the problem with marijuana that we have with alcohol, and yet we have six times the numbers of licenses for, for establishments selling alcohol than marijuana, many, many of them much more public and prominent. We are being asked to spend time and resources for a problem that does not exist. We're still reacting out of fear than out of good sense. I would ask to vote favorable action on warrant Article seven and no action on eight and nine. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Ananian. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Scott Ananian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10, presenting the Advisory Committee Report on Warrant Article eight. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on their amended version of warrant Article eight by a vote of sixteen to ten to zero. The petitioners would like to reduce by one the number of marijuana establishment licenses in town by replacing language which rounds up to instead round down. The article is written to require a townwide vote to ratify this change for storefront marijuana retailers. townwide vote to ratify this change for storefront marijuana retailers. The AC, the Advisory Committee reviewed the legal issues involved and discussed whether the change proposed was likely to be impactful and ultimately voted favorable action. So Town of Brookline Bylaw 8.37.4 caps the number of each category of marijuana establishment licenses at twenty percent of the number of liquor licenses for off-premises alcohol consumption rounded up. Currently, the town has issued nineteen off-premises liquor licenses, and so the number of marijuana storefront retailer licenses, which is by law category A, is capped at four. This by law amendment proposes to round down instead, which would cap the number of licenses at three instead. Existing licenses would keep their, existing licensees would keep their licenses, however. So the number of storefront marijuana retailers in town would remain at four, even if this is ratified by the voters and by town meeting. There are no existing licensees in by law category B marijuana couriers, C marijuana delivery operators, or D social consumption marijuana retailers, but caps on those categories would also be reduced if this by law amendment were passed. The town is authorized by the state to issue up to twenty-four off-premises liquor licenses. If two or more additional off-premises liquor licenses are issued in town, this article would keep the number of licenses in each category at four instead of having it increased to five. And I'll say that again, we're currently at nineteen. There is, there would be no change if twenty were issued. If twenty-one off-premises liquor licenses are issued in town, which is two more than present, normally there would be an increase in the cap of marijuana storefront retailers to five. This would keep it at four in that case. However, if only one off-premises liquor license is issued, then, then basically this article would have no effect one way or the other, because we'd be at exactly twenty, twenty percent of twenty would be exactly four. The subcommittee discussed the legal requirements which may mandate a townwide vote to approve this by law change. Some on the subcommittee felt that the modest change enacted by this article, reducing the cap but not the current number of storefront marijuana retailer licenses, was potentially not worth the trouble and expense of a townwide election. The petitioner and other subcommittee members felt that the expense would be modest if it were combined with the annual town election and that the reduction in the cap was worth it. This article amends the same section of the bylaws as warrant Article 7, and a combined text for both is given in the combined reports, just to be clear about how they were combined. If both are approved, the net effect would be to increase the current cap on storefront marijuana retailer, retailer licenses by one. However, a townwide, you know, if a townwide vote for warrant Article 8 still passes, a townwide vote is required in any case. So, in conclusion, a divided advisory committee voted sixteen in favor, ten opposed, and no abstentions to recommend favorable action on their amended motion under warrant Article 8. Thank you.
There's another motion for the question. I'm going to hear from at least four more speakers and a few questions before I'll allow a motion for the question. Mr. Black?
Hello, can I be here in my audible?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Ryan Black from Precinct 6. My strong inclination is to vote yes on warrant Article 7 as drafted, but I'm very sympathetic to the motion to refer. That is, since the intention seems to be the strengthening of its equity provisions. That said, I applaud the Select Board and town staff, though, for the effort that went into the language we have in front of us, and I am sympathetic to their reasoning about how the article was drafted so as to avoid potential legal challenges. Generally, I'm just appreciative of the fact that they're recognizing the inequities present in our town's current distribution of marijuana licenses. Also, I'd like to encourage you all to vote no on Articles 8 and 9. To talk about 8, I, well, I want to take what the proponents of Article 8, I want to take what they're saying sincerely, that we should be contemplative and deliberate on matters of equity with marijuana, which of course we should be, but I feel like I'm hearing conflicting narratives, namely that we must vote yes for nine study committee before deciding any policy, but that we also need to move ahead with eight's ballot question right now, that there is too much we don't know right now about marijuana to decide anything, but that it's incredibly urgent to approve this ballot question. I think we owe it to our constituents and those who have historically experienced the inequities present in the war on drugs and frankly, retail marijuana, too, to not rush into anything that might tie our hands during efforts to address such inequities, and I see warrant Article 8 is potentially doing that. Also, as previous speakers have noted, to a great extent, this is already a matter the voters in town meeting have decided upon. Additionally, I would be uncomfortable in voting to, I would be uncomfortable in voting to approve a ballot question without seeing the exact language that will be used. There are too many examples of ballot questions being confusingly worded and a voter thinking a yes vote means a no vote and vice versa. Lastly, if we do elect to refer or refer warrant Article 7, or if we ultimately vote no on it, I don't think we should rush into what Articles 8 or 9 purport to do. A referral on seven means there's going to be further deliberation on the topic of marijuana, so it would make sense to wait and see what the result of that process is before we explore any sort of measures like what eight and nine are proposing. So I'll close here by saying, again, please vote yes on seven and no on Articles 8 and 9. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granoff. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Susan Granoff, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member, speaking for the Advisory Committee, which strongly recommends favorable action on warrant Article 9 by a vote of twenty to seven with two abstentions. There's been a lot of confusion surrounding warrant Article 9, so let me start by telling you what warrant Article 9 does not seek to do. It does not seek to ban the sale of recreational marijuana to adults in Brookline. It does not seek to recriminalize marijuana use. It does not seek to eliminate any existing Brookline storefront licenses. Article 9 is simply a resolution that seeks the creation of a moderators' committee to study, evaluate, and make recommendations concerning the town's policies about the sale, distribution, and promotion of recreational marijuana in Brookline. The members of this committee would have diverse areas of expertise, views, and experiences, and would seek out broad community input from adults who purchase recreational marijuana to professionals in healthcare, education, the law, and diversity and equity matters, as well as parents and students. Because recreational marijuana is considered to be an illegal substance under federal law, municipalities such as Brookline have not had the benefit of federal laws with respect to the sale, distribution, and advertising of recreational marijuana within their borders, unlike with the sale of tobacco. During the past few years, Brookline has been forced to make major decisions about these subjects without any federal legal guidance, and the town has not taken the time to do its own study of the actual and potential implications and unintended consequences of these decisions on our community as a whole. But this landscape has begun to change. In the past four years, several states have legalized the sale of recreational marijuana, and many municipalities, both in Massachusetts and elsewhere in the United States, have begun to permit its sale and distribution. So now, there's a growing body of experiences that Brookline and this study committee could learn from. Also, now that marijuana has been legalized in some states, new medical studies concerning the effects of marijuana on American teenagers and youths have recently been published, which were not available before. Additionally, as Chair of the Advisory Committee Subcommittee that heard the public hearing on warrant Article 9, it's become very clear that many of Brookline's parents, particularly the parents of adolescents, are extremely concerned that we have been making decisions without really stepping back and considering the implications on our community and on our youth. And I think that, and the Advisory Committee thinks that passage of warrant Article 9 would go a long way to helping these parents feel that their concerns are being heard. So for all of these reasons, the Advisory Committee agrees that with the petitioners, that this would be an excellent time to create the kind of study that the petitioners request. Additionally, the Advisory Committee voted against the motion to refer the subject matter of Article 9 to the Advisory Council on Public Health by a vote of seven to fifteen, with three abstentions. It's not that we think that there isn't a place for the kind of study that the Advisory Council on Public Health wishes to do. It's simply that it's not a substitute for the broad-based, diverse kind of expertise that the committee, the petitioners are seeking under nine, would like to see created. So for all these above reasons, we urge you to vote favorable action on warrant Article 9. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Newell and Ms. Lindenboim. I said not five minutes ago that we're going to hear from at least two more speakers on each side and two or three questions from the floor, so would you please withdraw your motion for the question? Amy Newell?
Thank you. I'm Amy Newell. I live on Alton Place in Precinct 7. I've lived in Brookline since 1998. My older child just graduated Brookline High, and my younger one just started there. I'm not a town meeting member. I'm a member of the Cannabis Mitigation Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. I've also held a medical marijuana card for several years. Yes, I use marijuana in the present day, not just in some distant past, and I'm sure plenty of other people in this meeting do, too, whether or not they choose to admit it. I support Article 7. I support it on moral grounds. The war on drugs, including cannabis, has had a devastating impact on black and brown people in our country, and it's imperative that Brookline take action to address this injustice. Making equity licenses available is by no means sufficient, but it is a necessary first step. Dr. Fernandez made a great case for Article 7, and I urge you to vote yes. I'm against Article 8. I don't fear granting too many licenses, and I don't want to waste voters' time on the issue. Petitioners raise a particular concern that more dispensaries will cause more teenage cannabis use, which I do not find compelling. Teens in dry towns still have keg parties. I am also against Article 9. It makes no sense to ask a volunteer group to address seven separate policy and public health questions within a year. If we want to know more about the health impacts of cannabis in Brookline, we should refer that question to the Advisory Council on Public Health. More importantly, petitioners claim their concern for the health of Brookline teens. If so, they're focused on the wrong thing. Article 9 repeatedly compares cannabis to nicotine, which is alarmist, and does not mention alcohol once. Are there things we don't know yet about cannabis? Absolutely, but we are highly unlikely to find it as more dangerous than alcohol. CDC statistics show that alcohol causes more drug-related deaths per year than any other drug, except nicotine, which remains more lethal. It took me twenty years to quit smoking cigarettes. My personal experience with all three drugs, nicotine, alcohol, and cannabis tracks with the CDC data. While I don't want my children to
One minute.
Cannabis scares me the least. If petitioners are most worried about teen substance use, they should focus on nicotine and alcohol. Like any parent, I want my children to be healthy and happy, but cannabis is not Brookline teens' biggest problems. Our teens face housing and food insecurity, racism, increased hate crimes, an ongoing pandemic, and the existential threat of climate change. Yet the school tells me our ninth-grade guidance counselors are carrying caseloads of 200 students each. If petitioners are worried about Brookline teens' health, they should focus on increased funding for counselors and social workers and address the societal factors that impact our teens' health. This obsession with the dangers of cannabis is not based in fact and is a distraction from more pressing issues facing our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Warren, Precinct 1. For me, this debate has raised three questions. First, should I support the referral of Article 7 or vote no action? I believe that Kate Silba's analysis is correct. It is likely that large, non-equity operators will have access to new equity licenses under Article 7. We need to close the ownership loophole, as well as the underlying systemic issues with our regulations. I must admit that I feel like a no-action vote on Article 7 might somehow say that I'm against equity, and I'm not. But I do have concerns about the readiness and effectiveness of the policy being put forward. So I'll be voting to refer Article 7, because referral does not shut the door on equity and allows for the development of a more thoughtful solution. My second question is this. Do I believe that additional retail cannabis stores will do harm? The multiple letters from physicians, mental health professionals, students and parents, and the compelling speakers this evening have raised serious doubts for me that more stores will do no harm. For this reason, I'll be voting yes on Article 9. We need to get a better handle on the science and health concerns and the other factors affecting our cannabis policies that so many professionals have raised. And my third question is this. Should we slow down the expansion of retail cannabis in Brookline? If Brookline issues two more liquor licenses, it will trigger the creation of an additional retail cannabis license and two more delivery licenses. If you are concerned about expanded access, the automatic mechanism to increase licenses is already in place without Article 7. Additional licenses tied to the issuance of off-premises licenses will occur. Article 8 would moderate the pace of expansion by increasing the trigger of additional cannabis licenses from a threshold of twenty-one issued liquor licenses to a threshold of twenty-five issued liquor licenses. A Quirkin state law requires that this change in our bylaws be affirmed by the voters through ballot question. The cost of putting this question in front of voters is nominal, just printing some ink on a ballot. It seems to me to be a win-win situation, given all of the concerns about expanding cannabis access, to let both the voters and town meeting weigh in on this decision. I'll be voting yes on Article 8. I'd like to hear from the voters on this issue. With that, I plan to vote yes on the referral for Article 7, yes on Article 8, and yes on the petitioner's version of Article 9. Thank you.
Thank you. Now going to have a couple of questions from the floor. Mr. Levy? Mark Levy?
Hi, my name is Mark Levy. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 7, and I have actually three questions, which I had hoped would be addressed during the debate, but there haven't been, and I think that's a real tragedy. I hope somebody maybe can briefly answer them. The debate so far has been binary. Marijuana is bad for kids, vote no on seven. Equity is good for the community and for people who have been disadvantaged, vote yes on seven. That is just too damn simple. First thing is, how much would an increase in two or one or three licenses actually change the amount of child use of marijuana? Or are those currently being met by just four? Is access actually going to increase in a substantive way? The second is, how can the town ensure that there won't be phony equity licenses produced, and that we will take real strong efforts on the town to make sure that all efforts, that all those licenses go to people, to groups that are largely, if not entirely, from the affected impacted communities? And finally, if there is any truth at all to the anecdotal evidence that there has been a substantial increase in marijuana use among young people, regardless of whether seven passes or not, the current four, what the hell is the town going to do about that? And can they do at least enough that the addition of one or two licenses won't send the figure skyrocketing and have even more kids be impacted? Those are my questions. I hope somebody can answer them, though I don't.
I'm going to call on Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Raul Fernandez for the Select Board. You know, Mark, those are difficult questions to answer. I think there's been, you know, this is what warrant Article 9, I think, seeks to look into, to study, and to better understand, but that study, you know, would be forthcoming. I will say that, that I think it's short-sighted not to include the Advisory Council on Public Health in terms of leading that study. the Advisory Council on Public Health in terms of leading that study. And so for folks that are interested in deeper research on this, I really encourage you to support the motion to refer to the Advisory Council on Public Health. There is no evidence at this point that we know of that adding two additional licenses will lead to a substantial difference in consumption by, I think the issue here is around people who are underage. But, you know, I don't know that I could say more than that. You know, I hesitate to bring, we only have an interim, although well-experienced Director of Public Health right now, who may want to weigh in, but, you know, otherwise we'll have, I think, competing medical doctors and public health experts on either side of the issue. So I'll leave it there.
I think that's about as good a response as you're going to get, Mr. Levy. Ms. Khan? Janice Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board Member John Van Scoyck invoked Newton and Newton's success in getting an equity candidate. And even though we began this race at the same time, the voters voted at the same time, Newton has taken its time to issue its eight licenses. They've only issued three thus far. And along the way, Newton rejected applicants. And I don't know if that, if people in Town Meeting understand that Newton did that. And so I guess I want to clarify Brookline's, the way Brookline has gone about doing the same thing. So we have four licenses. All four have been given out, and I'd like clarification on whether Brookline did the same scrutiny and reject applicants along the way. Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez, do you want to handle that one as well?
Sure. And if we can tee up Melissa Goff, who may have more to add here, that'd be great. You know, I'll say, you know, the policy that we adopted as a town was a first-come, first-served policy, and, you know, they were, you know, we were bound to engage with those folks who were, you know, who had that first-mover advantage, the kind of things we're talking about, ready-to-go, capitalize the works. And, you know, again, what that does is, we didn't end up in a situation like, let's say, the mayor of Fall River, who was picking and choosing winners and who should get these licenses or not, pretty much on his own. And, but the downside of that is, we didn't have a robust plan to consider equity, racial, socioeconomic, or otherwise. And we see the result here. Maybe Melissa has more to say about the way that that process played out.
Well, I'm going to call on Mr. Samani to respond to Mr. Levy's first question, which I think was not adequately addressed. Mr. Samani?
Mr. Moderator, Precinct, Mr. Levy. This, if warrant article were passed and is to be made available, that those be given to an equity applicant. I think you heard, I think you've heard from the Select Board, excuse me, I think you've heard from the Advisory that the state's certification process does not guarantee that the applicant be a minority person. And I think you've also heard, Fernandez, that what's current policy does is it be the cannon that would then be acceptable to the Select Board. One thing I'd like to share, that the Boston, in their policy, they actually require fifty percent ownership of the actual has chosen not to go down that path. And I'm not sure why, because that actually would guarantee that a minority applicant would be able to ownership of one of these retail stores.
Thank you. Ms. Soifer, S-O-I-F-F-E-R, Brookline High School.
Yes, hello. I'm Elisa Soifer. I'm sixteen, and I've lived in Brookline my whole life. So before you vote, I'd just like to ask you a few questions. First of all, should we prioritize two owners who may be of minorities to the health of hundreds of teens in our community? And secondly, some of these teens, some of these speakers have suggested that teens aren't actually getting marijuana, but teens are getting it. They're using fake licenses, et cetera. There are ways for them to get it. You can't deny that. And third of all, other than money, why should this be done through marijuana as opposed to any other business that does not affect public health? And just a clarification, some people have suggested that dispensaries don't affect anything. However, it's actually becoming part of the high school culture. I wrote a letter on my concerns about having marijuana in my neighborhood and more of it, and asked other Brookline students to sign it. Some gave some rather surprising responses. Here's a quote, "The more marijuana, the better." Am I right? Another friend told me that many of his friends had many friends, or he had many friends that did marijuana, so he would want to make access to them as easy as possible. So therefore, he wanted more dispensaries. Clearly, marijuana has seeped into the high school community. It's become part of the culture there. These are my friends, some since kindergarten or even before them. Unfortunately, in Brookline, cannabis is becoming not only accepted, but expected. Adding more dispensaries insinuates that marijuana is really not all that bad, encouraging more and more high school students to try it. Here's why. Every day, hundreds of students walking to BHS will pass by various dispensaries, and even just going through town to hang out with friends. People are constantly passing by these dispensaries. They're all over the place. Even if they aren't heavily advertised, they're there. They're in the community. And because the town is upholding them, it's like the town is saying they're okay. And as a result, people think that marijuana is okay and that it's not, that has no adverse health effects. However, it does. Or even if you aren't sure if it does, vote to refer Article Seven so that we can wait and have more data. Vote yes on Articles Eight and Nine, so that we can find that data and discover what we need to know in order to make these decisions with enough data to really be educated on this. Because after seeing so much marijuana, it's become accepted and expected in the community and for the teens. And this is the community that I've grown up in. I don't want to see it just having more marijuana than it already does. It's, we already have four dispensaries. I just don't think that we need any more than we do. Even if the incentives here are good of just, like, trying to increase equity, the actual results are going to be significantly worse than what we would hope for. So let's, let's try to prioritize the hundreds of teens over two owners who may potentially be people of color or people from minorities. It's, I think, I think that's a balance that we can easily say makes sense, especially given that this is, this is the whole community that we're talking about. And it's, the facts on the community are real, and even if you can't always see them, even if there are no records of these illegal, of teens illegally acquiring marijuana, it's definitely happening. And just because you don't see it in official records doesn't mean it's not there in the hallways of schools, going when people walk down the streets.
Please conclude, ma'am.
Yes, of course. Sorry, sir. But yeah, I just, I would really hope that we vote no, and we refer, all right, sorry, that we refer Article Seven until we have more data. That's why I ask you to vote yes on Articles Eight and Nine. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now take Mr. Tuckman's motion for the question. Is there a second? No motion should die for lack of a second. Many seconds. Well, before we vote on the question, which will terminate debate, let me read the speakers. It's a little difficult to sort this out, but as far as I can tell, we have one additional speaker who signed up to speak in favor of the Select Board position, and that's Jonathan Lau, who is a non-Town Meeting member. We have a number of people who signed up against Article Seven and for Article Eight and Nine, or some combination thereof, and in some cases for the referral motions under one or more of those articles. There as follows: Ms. Thall, Mr. Gordon, Ms. Duffield, Ms. Han, Mr. O'Neill, Ms. Neufind, Mr. Spritz, Richard Stock, a non-Town Meeting member, and Mr. Park, a non-Town Meeting member. I have lined up to ask questions or make comments. Ms. Fraley, Mr. Yacine, Ms. Park, Susan Park, Patricia Mayer, Jan Yezikoff, who's not a Town Meeting member, and Ms. Pelkey. Those are the people who are poised to continue the debate, which has been now going on for an hour and a half, if you vote against the motion for the question. It requires a two-thirds vote. And we will commence the voting. Okay, the voting period has commenced. Forty-five seconds. Yes, to terminate debate. No, to continue. And of course, abstain to abstain. Voting period is over. That motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Hundred and sixty-nine in favor, forty-four opposed, and sixteen abstentions. We will vote first on Article Seven. There are, as you recall, two motions before you, the main motion on page seven dash three, to increase the number of allowable marijuana outlets, and the motion to refer offered by Ms. Silbaugh, which is on Supplement Number One, Page One, to refer to a moderators' committee and to issue its recommendation, the subject matter of the article, to a moderators' committee to report no later than September thirty, two thousand twenty-two. In accordance with our usual procedures, we'll take the motion to refer first. If that passes, we will not vote on the main motion. If it fails, we will then vote on the main motion. So this is Article Seven, motion to refer. Voting period has commenced. Takes a majority vote to refer. Voting period is over. May I have the count, please? Motion carries by a vote of one hundred and fifty-nine in favor, seventy opposed, and nine abstentions. Article Eight, the motion under Article Eight is on Page One of Supplement Number One to round down the number of permissible liquor license, sorry, marijuana licenses, as you heard described by the speakers. This is Article Eight, main motion. Voting period has commenced. Voting period is over. May I have the count? Motion fails by a vote of one hundred and five in favor, one hundred and thirteen opposed, and fourteen abstentions. Article Nine, again, we have a main motion on page nine dash thirteen over to nine dash sixteen. Who's, somebody has a point of order? Mr. O'Neill, we, what is your point of order? If you're concerned about not having been called upon to speak, we have terminated debate, and we have no comment allowable between the termination of debate and the votes. But what is your point of order?
I get that, Mr. Moderator, but I had to go through the ringers and fill out, Donna O'Neill, senior Town Meeting member, President for EC. I had to fill out a disclosure form over warrant Article Seven, because I have a financial interest in it. Why wasn't I allowed to speak? And why did I have to go through the ringer, fill out the disclosure form, conflict of interest form, and not be able to speak on an equity article? This is crazy, man. Like, this is, wow. Unbelievable. Madam Moderator was going to let me speak. Mr. Moderator's not going to let me speak. That's wild.
Well, I'm afraid Town Meeting is not going to let you speak, Mr. O'Neill. It's not my choice, believe me. On the motion to refer under Article Nine, which is on Page One of Supplement Number One, to refer the subject matter of the warrant article to the Advisory County on Public Health, requires a majority vote. This is Article Nine, motion to refer. Voting period has commenced. If you vote to refer, we will not reach the main motion. Takes a majority vote. Yeah, I'd like to remind non-Town Meeting members that you don't get a vote here. The screen comes down in front of you, but only Town Meeting members can vote. The voting period is terminated. May I have the count, please? Motion carries by a vote of one hundred and fifty-two to seventy-four with eight abstentions. So the, this matter will be referred to the advisory county council on public health. We now move to Article Ten, and insofar as I'm the primary speaker and drafter of the the main motion under this article, I would request that somebody move to defer, to postpone consideration of Article Ten until after we deal, we complete our business with this special Town Meeting Number Two tomorrow evening. It has been moved. Is there a second? It has been seconded. This is, the motion is to postpone Article Ten to tomorrow evening. Requires a majority vote. Now we're in the middle of a vote. Yes. Okay, the voting period has started. The voting period is over. Let's count, please. Motion carries by a vote of two hundred and nine in favor, twelve opposed, and ten abstentions. We move to Article Eleven. The main motion under Article Eleven is found on page eleven dash four, moved by Mr. Toffel, seconded by Ms. Bastian, that the town authorized the Select Board to file a petition with the General Court exempting the Town of Brookline from in-person quorums. Ms. Bastian, you have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bonnie Bastian. My pronouns are she, her. A town meeting member in precinct five. Warrant Article Eleven focuses on meetings of public bodies and seeks to allow any number of members, including the chair, to participate remotely and to be counted towards quorum requirements. To achieve this, this home rule petition asks the state legislature to exempt Brookline from the state's open meeting law clause that limits quorum counts to just those members attending in person and requires that the chair attend in person. The governor's COVID emergency provisions have lifted the in-person quorum requirements for close to two years now and has created never-before-seen access for residents to participate in town government as members of a public body. These emergency provisions are set to expire on April first, two thousand twenty-two. Warrant Article Eleven seeks to make this essential access to a seat at the table permanent because we want all Brookline residents, regardless of their ability to get to Town Hall, to be full participants in local government, and to have equal access to information, agenda setting, and decision-making. This article, as well as the petitioner's motion under Article Twelve, are strongly supported by the Brookline Commission on Disability, which declared that, quote, "The voices of people who would benefit from the measures requested on Articles Eleven and Twelve are to be considered as vital to the conversations as they relate to the policies of town governments," unquote. In-person requirements have always been inaccessible for our neighbors whose work require inflexible hours, who work multiple jobs, who are parents or caregivers who lack alternative care options, those who cannot drive or lack transit access, people with health challenges, and people living with disabilities. These quorum requirements often limit us to a tokenized number of representatives of these communities appointed to public bodies. If we are serious about truly making serving on public bodies accessible to all, then we must remove in-person quorum requirements. Otherwise, our lack of urgency to provide this access to a seat at the decision-making tables suggests that the people's voices affected by this warrant article are somehow disposable, trivial, or valueless. In the State House, several statewide bills have been introduced that seek to open up access in ways similar to what Article Eleven is seeking. And I'm proud that members of our Select Board, Advisory Committee, and Commission on Women, and the Economic Development Advisory Board all wrote letters in support of those efforts and that some of those members even testified in favor at the State House. But these bills have stalled in committee, and it doesn't look like they will be up for a vote anytime soon. We cannot wait for the state legislature to decide that these quorum requirements are antiquated and harmful. We believe that eliminating the in-person quorum requirement for Brookline public bodies is a civil rights issue necessary to ensure broad and equitable participation in Brookline government and as such require, as such warrants great urgency. We now know, after these almost two years of one hundred percent remote meetings, that we are in fact capable of effectively conducting meetings without an in-person quorum. While Articles Eleven and Twelve can both stand alone to increase accessibility, if Eleven is passed by the state legislature and Article Twelve by town meeting, they work in tandem to create the highest level of accessibility. A strong democracy requires widespread participation without unnecessary barriers. This is an opportunity to codify a more open, equitable, and engaged Brookline. Please join me in voting favorable action on warrant Article Eleven. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardbeck.
Good evening, everyone. Kelly Hardbeck, town meeting member from precinct seven, speaking for the advisory committee tonight. Warrant Article Eleven is one that the advisory committee is, we're providing a report on, but no recommendation as there are no direct financial or operational impacts to the town by passing it. This is simply enabling legislation. As you heard from the petitioner, the costs and schedule associated with implementing the goals of warrant eleven, warrant Article Eleven, are actually the subject of warrant Article Twelve. So as you heard, warrant Article Eleven seeks to request to change in the open meeting law for Brookline that would allow public bodies to permanently offer an option for remote participation. Like town meeting tonight, boards and commissions have been meeting remotely since early two thousand twenty. And these provisions expire on April first, two thousand twenty-two. And once again, we will all be held accountable to the in-person quorum and voting requirements of the OML. Remote options for participation foster greater transparency, accountability, and stakeholder participation in town government. An interest in offering wider access extends beyond our town. As you heard, a bill was filed at the state level seeking to reform the OML to remove these in-person quorum requirements. And that bill was referred to the Joint Committee on State Administration and Regulatory Oversight. Unfortunately, it has not yet come back to the floor for a vote. So in conclusion, the advisory committee is supportive of the intent of this article, but did not vote on a specific recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Van Skoyak?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, John Van Skoyak from the Select Board. And quite simply, Article Eleven is a petitioned article that asks town meeting to authorize the Select Board to file home rule legislation that would eliminate physical quorum requirements for public meetings. This would allow for fully remote public meetings. The Select Board discussed the pros and cons that they have experienced during the pandemic while meeting remotely via Zoom. A majority of the board agreed that it would be useful to have the flexibility to hold remote meetings after the emergency use has passed. And the board voted favorable action on the motion offered by the petitioners with three votes in favor, one abstention, and one, one person was absent at the time of the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll be brief. Gil Hoy, town meeting member, precinct thirteen. Perhaps there's a bit of lemonade in the COVID lemons, namely our experience with meetings not required to be in person. For democracies to function properly, we want as many eligible voters as possible to vote. Equally important is the ability to participate in governmental affairs and thus making the capacity to take part as easy as we can and our meetings as readily available and as accessible as we can. As we've seen, the convenience of non-in-person meetings dramatically increases the level of participation by town meeting members. Non-in-person meetings also make participation possible for those who might otherwise have serious impediments, such as those with significant childcare responsibilities, persons with disabilities, or those who care for an elderly or sick relative. There is no good reason not to support this and many reasons to support eliminating in-person quorum requirements. Please vote favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman.
Hi, I'm Ms. Zimmerman, a town meeting member, precinct seven. I'll also be brief. I think it is highly important for us to allow.
You're breaking up, and we can't hear you. Can you, I don't know what you can do about that, but give it a shot.
I will try to turn my microphone up. Is that any better? Okay. So, or I'll just speak loudly. I think it's really important for solid democracy if all can access town governmental affairs.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Zimmerman, we can't understand you. You've tried turning off your video. Well, I don't know what else to, how else you can fix this problem, but we can't understand what you're saying. So I'd like to move along to Ms. Schweitzer.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
All right, you're. Ms. Schweitzer?
Good evening, everyone. Naomi Schweitzer, town meeting member, precinct ten. I am going to read a statement from the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Disability Policy Consortium that addresses both warrant Articles Eleven and Twelve. Dear members of Brookline Town Meeting, as Executive Director of Massachusetts's largest statewide disability rights advocacy organization, I write to express our strong support for warrant Articles Eleven and Twelve. During the COVID-19 pandemic, people with disabilities have watched with frustration and amusement as accommodations that we have been told for decades were impractical and unreasonable become suddenly universally available as soon as non-disabled people needed to use them. Although it has been thrown into sharp relief how unjust the old normal was for our community, this rollout of new ways to participate in employment, education, and government has genuinely been a godsend for the ability of people with disabilities to participate in society. Few examples of this shift have been more impactful than the remote participation in public meetings. From state-level forums to candidate debates, and especially in municipal government meetings, we have consistently seen far more people with disabilities participating in civic life, even when purely in-person meetings are held in fully accessible locations, which is by no means always true. Barriers from inaccessible sidewalks to inadequate transportation to the symptoms of chronic illness itself keep people with disabilities away from public meetings. For this reason, state law has exempted municipal disability commissions from in-person quorum requirements since two thousand and fifteen. However, this option did not exist pre-COVID for any other public meetings. This did not, of course, keep the issues being discussed from whether affordable housing will be constructed to whether and where accessible parking will be provided, from impacting people with disabilities, with the result that our community was denied a voice in decisions that significantly affected our lives. Having the option to participate remotely leveled the playing field and ensured we actually have an equal say in government. In Somerville, where I live, remote participation by people with disabilities has already had an impact on issues from road reconstruction to outdoor dining. These two warrant articles would ensure that remote participation would be genuinely effective and inclusive. They would ensure that people with disabilities have equal ability to participate in boards, commissions, and hearings, not only as guests or witnesses, but as commissioners, select board members, and any other positions available to non-disabled people. Warrant Article Twelve in particular is critical to ensuring that remote participation is technically functional and should be implemented without delay.
Ms. Schweitzer, I'm afraid, no, you, don't mute her yet. Ms. Schweitzer, you have exceeded three minutes. I've given you fair warning. Would you conclude your remarks, please, swiftly?
Mr. Moderator, I had emailed you asking for five minutes, and you had approved that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Go ahead.
Thank you. So Colin, the executive director, was saying warrant Article Twelve in particular is critical to ensuring that remote participation is technically functional and should be implemented without delay and with all necessary funding. Moreover, implementing these articles would also be a prudent way for Brookline to get ahead of the curve on these issues. Having already provided for remote participation for all meetings throughout the pandemic, the town would be hard-pressed to legally decline a reasonable accommodation request from a disabled resident requesting that remote participation be provided. Rather than rushing to provide for remote participation later, these warrant articles provide the town an opportunity to plan for effective implementation and set a reasonable timeline. For all these reasons, we urge you to approve these warrant articles. Sincerely, Colin Killick, Executive Director, the Disability Policy Consortium.
Thank you. With respect to Ms. Zimmerman, I understand that some of you at home could understand her. The problem is, I can't. And the moderator has to be able to hear and understand what's, what speakers are saying. I've had, had a motion for the question. I have, and I'll, I'll accept that motion. Is there a second? The motion is seconded. I have the following people signed up to speak in favor of this article. Mr. Graff, Ms. Fisher, Ms. Bernard, and Mr. Tuckman, and James Lee, a non-town meeting member. I have no one signed up to speak against it. This motion to terminate debate requires a two-thirds vote. Whenever you're ready. Okay, the voting period has started. It requires a two-thirds vote. If you vote in favor, you terminate debate. If you vote against, that would, we would continue to hear from the speakers that I've named. Voting period is over. May I have the count? Motion carries by a two-thirds vote, one hundred ninety-two in favor, twenty-five opposed, and eleven abstentions. The main motion on eleven dash four, which you've heard described. We will now vote on that motion. The voting period has commenced. This requires only a majority vote. Voting period has terminated. The count, please. Motion carries by a vote of two hundred nineteen in favor, five opposed, and four abstentions. Article Twelve. Motion on Article Twelve is on page twelve dash five over to the top of page twelve dash six. Moved by Mr. Toffel, seconded by Ms. Bastian, that it's a resolution relating to the equipment of municipal conference and hearing rooms. There is an advisory committee amendment which would simply delete. which would simply delete the words. Sorry. Well, the Advisory Committee motion is on page 3 of Supplement Number 1, and it does make a number of changes in the wording of the paragraphs of this article as will be, of this motion as will be presumably described by the speakers. It's, a motion is made by Ms. Hardabek and seconded by Mr. Sandman. It's on Supplement 2, page 3. Supplement 1. Whoops. I'm sorry, it's Supplement 2, pages 2 and 3. It's Mr. Toffel.
Mike Toffel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8, just to clarify, Mr. Moderator, it is indeed Supplement Number 2, where we can find AC's alternative edits to our motion. Supplement 2.
So is that the, do you agree with the Advisory Committee motion?
No, we do not, petitioners have their own.
All right, all right, fine. Supplement Number 2, pages 1 and 2, is the Advisory Committee motion made by Ms. Hardabek and seconded by Mr. Sandman. I frankly didn't expect to get this far this evening, but I'm delighted that we are. Ms. Bastian?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bonnie Bastian, she/her/hers, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. The petitioner motion under Article 12 is a resolution that asks the town to acquire and install audiovisual equipment in all municipal conference and hearing rooms, and to conduct staff training for how to use it to enable AV remote participation for all public meetings subject to open meeting law. After several discussions with town staff, our motion poses the following schedule that town staff themselves deemed feasible. Four rooms, including the Select Board Hearing Room, the School Committee Hearing Room, and the room used by the Advisory Committee by June 1, 2022. Four additional rooms by November 1, 2022, and all such rooms by June 1, 2023, for a total of 12 rooms, which is the number of, the number town staff told us would be needed to ensure all public meetings could be accessible, even on a busy evening with many overlapping meetings. It also calls on the Select Board and moderator who appoint public bodies to, once technological hurdles are overcome, insists that all Brookline public bodies meeting under open meeting law meet in a hybrid manner rather than via the tradition of meeting in person only. Even before we proposed this resolution, town staff was already moving in the direction of hybrid meetings because the staff understand that this is the future. We are adding a timeline to keep the ball moving and the town accountable for implementing this technology, which is critical to ensure broad access to all meetings of all public bodies. Additionally, the one-time investment in technology involved in this project is eligible for ARPA funds. Remote work and virtual meetings at this scale have been an accessibility accommodation that the disability community and organizations like the Boston Center for Independent Living have long been calling for. Examples of other accessibility accommodations include sidewalk curb cuts, elevators, and video closed captioning. They, there aren't any meetings of public bodies in Brookline that shouldn't be fully accessible. This has always been the rule and the assumption, but not the practice. Many people living with disabilities experience democracy as fragmented, inaccessible, and ableist. Those of us that don't normally have physical disabilities and mobility issues got a taste of what lack of accessibility feels like during the pandemic. We lost easy access to grocery stores, to our jobs, to healthcare, and many other things. We should all understand now just how important and urgent these kinds of accessibility accommodations are. I urge you to vote no on the Advisory Committee's alternative motion, which makes three edits that would weaken the progress toward accessibility being called for by the petitioner's motion. First, the AC's edits pare down the number of conference rooms proposed in the petitioner's motion by deleting the word "all" from where we refer to installing hybrid technology in all municipal conference rooms and hearing rooms. The petitioners want all 12 conference rooms to be hybrid-enabled because in our discussions with staff, we learned 12 were needed to ensure all meetings be accessible. Second, the AC's edits pare down the amount of public body meetings that would be accessible in the petitioner's motion by deleting the word "all" from where we refer to requiring AV access to all public body meetings. We petitioners want all such meetings, subject to open meeting law, to be accessible to folks off-site, not just some of those meetings. Third, AC's edits abandon our third deadline. While the petitioner motion provides June 2023, a year and a half from now, to install this technology in just 12 rooms, the AC motion is intentionally vague about just how many rooms their motion advocates. In sum, the AC motion is less urgent and does not insist that the residents of Brookline continue to have access to all public body meetings via a remote option in the end. It lacks the urgency necessary to be sure no one loses access to civic engagement and a seat at the table. A lack of clear, of a clear timeline with accountability makes it easy in time to allow this project to lose steam and be left incomplete. In this way, the AC's motion is a letdown to our parents of young children, our mobility-impaired residents, our residents living with disabilities, our older residents, and those of us with inflexible work hours. It says that while their presence will be welcomed in some meetings held in some rooms, their access will simply not be provided in others. As you will hear from our speakers on this issue, this is not acceptable. The petitioners understand that this timeline is asking a lot of our town staff, but we were sure to negotiate a timeline and number of rooms that town staff deemed feasible. This investment of time and money is worth it, and I'm confident that the town can rise to this challenge. Lastly, I want to lift up and thank some of the activists working for disability rights, like Diane Hu and Shia French of the Boston Center for Independent Living, Colin Killick of the Disability Policy Consortium, as well as our own Brookline Commission on Disability. Their guidance and advocacy work has been an inspiration for both Warren Article 11 and 12, and a source of much of the information. Please join me in voting no on the AC's amendment and yes on the petitioner's motion on Warren Article 12, thank you.
Well, Mr. Sandman, if you are going to take issue with something that Ms. Bastian said, that is not a point of order. I can list you as a speaker opposed to, or in favor of the Advisory Committee Amendment, if you wish. But if you have some other point of order. Holy mackerel. No. We'll have a short recess. Okay, I'm sorry for the interruption, we had a small, a minor mishap in the auditorium, but it seems to be okay. So, Mr. Sandman, if you're still, if you'd like to speak, that's fine. And I noticed that you do, and so you withdraw on your point of order. And I will call on Ms. Hardabek to presumably come to the defense of the beleaguered Advisory Committee. Ms. Hardabek, you have three minutes.
Kelly Hardabek, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7, speaking for the Advisory Committee on Warren Article 12. By a vote of 11 to 8 to 6, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the Warren Article as amended. As you heard, Warren Article 12 is a resolution that calls on the Select Board to equip all municipal conference rooms to allow all boards and commissions to provide an option for remote participation. The article also includes estimated costs for equipment in a schedule that reflects the current plans developed by town staff. To be clear, the costs mentioned in the article are estimates and reflect only the initial purchase of equipment. They don't include any funding for upgrades or equipment maintenance. Likewise, the cost estimates for staffing could also change based on actual need. The schedule laid out in the article calls for eight rooms, including the Select Board and School Committee Hearing Rooms, to be upgraded by November 1, 2022, about a year from now, and the remaining rooms to be outfitted with suitable technology just seven months later, or June 1, 2023. The Advisory Committee is very supportive of encouraging the town efforts to equip all the conference rooms to provide greater remote access. However, we wanted to provide some flexibility to town staff in implementing these changes should any issues arise with the rollout use of technology. In our motion, we believe that the "all" is redundant and it's not needed, it's not intended to pare anything down just to give town staff flexibility in the town itself to allow for changes in the proposed schedule, should the rollout not go as planned. It also allows for the development of policies for the retention and use of recordings, which was one of the things that was raised during the Advisory Committee discussion on this. So, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action by a vote of 11 to 8 to 6 on our amended article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy. And it's been pointed out to me that I really ought to explain the effect of your votes before we start the voting period, and I will try very hard to do that in the future. It's a fair point. Mr. Hoy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gil Hoy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. I support this article for much of the same reasons that I supported Article 12, or Article 11, rather, which I won't repeat now, I would recommend favorable action on Article 12 as amended by the Advisory Committee. Should that motion fail, then I would recommend favorable action as well on the, what would then be the main motion brought by the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Rebecca Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, Mr. Moderator, you were good enough to say I could have four minutes for this, I hope not to use it all.
That's correct, yep.
Thank you, Rebecca Stone, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and Chair of the Brookline Commission for Women, speaking on behalf of the Commission for Women. Article 12, 12 as we've heard, asks the town to ensure the technology is in place to enable both fully remote and hybrid public meetings to occur going forward. Importantly, given the likelihood that the legislature will not extend the allowances for fully remote meetings, Article 12 would make remote participation possible in Brookline for the public. That represents a big step forward. The Commission for Women has been a leading voice in Brookline for remote access and participation in boards and commissions because of what remote access has done to swell civic participation, and in particular, to reduce barriers to participation experienced disproportionately by women. People experiencing low income, our older and less mobile residents, those with care responsibilities at home, those with less flexible work schedules, are all more likely to be women. Single parents of younger children, where women, again, far outnumber men, may not be able to find or afford childcare to attend meetings on a night during the work week. Even in two working-parent households, there is no guarantee that one parent will have the flexibility to take over while the other leaves for several hours. A number of members currently serving on the Commission for Women have said that their professional or personal obligations may make it impossible for them regularly to attend in-person meetings. Should the legislature deny us the ability to continue meeting on Zoom? And while the open meeting law already allows remote participation by members of a public body, as long as the chair and a quorum are present in person, not having the benefit of full participation or not being able to convene a quorum could both significantly hinder our work. That makes it even more important to ensure that we provide the technology to allow all public boards, at least to take advantage of the remote participation options in current law. But remote participation for board members is only half of the equation of civic participation. The other half concerns the public's access to meetings, and on that point, the petitioner's language on Article 12 gives Brookline an opportunity to lead. State law only requires that the public have physical access to meetings held in person, and we've heard that that's not always met. Article 12 asks that Brookline do better than the law requires, providing the public with remote access to meetings that may have to be held in person, again, starting in just a few months. The need for that remote access is particularly acute for public hearings, at which getting public input on a matter is the whole point. It makes sense to facilitate broad and diverse participation in such hearings by expanding the opportunity to participate to those who cannot arrange to be physically present. The Commission discussed the challenges of running hybrid meetings where both sitting members and the public are participating remotely as well as in person. Those challenges are real, we experienced some of that last night. But as many of our teachers, some current committee chairs, and staff at the senior center will tell you from recent experience, overcoming those challenges requires three things. Appropriate technology, technical help from staff, and training for anyone using the technology. That is precisely what the petitioner's language in Article 12 calls for. Commission for Women looks forward, hopefully, to continued robust civic participation in Brookline and urges favorable action on the petitioner's language, not the AC motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vance Skoyak. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, John Vance Skoyak, for the Select Board. The Select Board reconsidered their vote on Article 12 in order to address the changes proposed by the petitioner and that of the Advisory Committee. The petitioner is not in agreement with these changes as described in the Advisory Committee report. The Select Board chose to support the Advisory Committee motion because it provided more flexibility to staff. And the vote was three in favor of the Advisory Committee motion and two opposed. If I may, I'd like to just reflect some personal observations on this. I might be the only person in town who tweets on a daily basis the calendar of every single meeting that is taking place as a, as a public meeting of a body of the town, a board, a commission, or committee. I don't think I have ever known there to be more than, I'm going to say, five, but I really think it's more like four bodies, committees, commissions, meeting at the exact same time on the exact same day. These meetings tend to be kind of scattered over the days of the week and scattered over the time slots available for meetings. My point in bringing this up is there's really no way of knowing that we need to have every single conference room provided with audiovisual equipment in order to be able to provide, to, to meet the very worthy objectives of this article, which, by the way, I will vote for unreservedly if the Advisory Committee motion fails to pass. Everything about the article is commendable and good, with the exception, as the Advisory Committee noted, that it just kind of overreaches by saying every conference room will have to be provided with audiovisual equipment in order to meet the objectives of the proposal. I think we'll probably be able to meet the objectives of the proposal with maybe six, seven conference rooms equipped. And we'll find that out. And if the major purpose of- major purpose of this is to simply state as a principle that every meeting has to be hybrid, we'll keep building out until we are absolutely sure that every, we have enough conference rooms that are equipped for every meeting to be hybrid. There's no doubt about that, but there is doubt about whether we're going to need to go all the way to all the conference rooms. And so I think the Advisory Committee made a very sensible change, and that's why the Select Board voted in favor of the Advisory Committee version.
Thank you. I called your attention that this is a resolution calling upon the Select Board to take certain action, so it's not as if we're passing a law here. Ms. Brown. Deborah Brown. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Brown. I'm a Town Meeting Member, Precinct one. I am proposing that we accept warrant article twelve as introduced by Bastian Toffel and Schaefer. Two years ago, I showed up at a town, at, at town meeting with a feeding tube. For three nights, I had that feeding tube. It was the thing hurt, and it was unpleasant, just, just knowing that I had that. I routinely have asthma attacks, just my lot in life. And so when I hear people saying that they don't want a deadline, having just voted for warrant article eleven, I'm like, no, you're not getting the point. The point is that this town notoriously kicks the can down the road. But in this instance, you have a staff that said, yeah, we can meet these deadlines. And, and I would say make the language flexible. But this deadline is not arbitrary. It's not capricious, and it's eminently reasonable. The last deadline is what, over a year out, a year and a half out? We ought to be able to do that. I trust our departments to be able to pull that off. So, so why am I such a proponent? And having come out of a large organization, I can tell you that actually deadlines matter. They help us to collaborate.
One minute.
Thank you very much. They help us keep on track with complex tasks. They help us all manage our expectations. They promote creativity. They promote accountability. They allow us to sharpen our, our focus. And they help us to build in contingencies. So why does this matter? Deadlines matter. I mean, in my case, it, it, it literally could mean whether I make it to a meeting or not. We've got clear whys in terms of why these deadlines are important. And lastly, you know, they, they are helping us focus on what is not only realistic, but is essential, as Rebecca talked about, to a vast majority, to many people in this community that we see and that we don't see. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sandman. I won't take it. We'll hear from Mr. Sandman and.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Sandman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct three, and Advisory Committee Chair. I listened to this discussion with a certain amount of frustration. Back on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, the Advisory Committee was the first Brookline public body to hold a public meeting on Zoom. And I believe we are the only public body to have actually run a hybrid meeting with people in the meeting and people on Zoom as well, with a conference room camera we borrowed back in March of two thousand and twenty. We are enthusiastic supporters of installation of the needed equipment in town conference rooms. There's no quarrel over the dates proposed in either our version or in the, in the petitioner's version. But I want to make sure Town Meeting Members are clear that the intent of the Advisory Committee's version is most definitely not to pare down the number of rooms with the needed audiovisual equipment. For better or worse, we wordsmith the petitioner's motion by removing all where we thought it was redundant. For example, the motion asked the town bodies, quote, town bodies, unquote, be encouraged to hold meetings with remote access. In our minds, sorry, I beg your pardon, public bodies be encouraged to hold meetings with remote access. In our minds, public bodies inherently means all public bodies. Certainly, if our version doesn't pass, I think a majority of Advisory Committee members will vote for the petitioner's motion, redundant or not, but I do want people to appreciate what it was that motivated us to make those, in our view, non-substantive changes. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had a motion for the question. I have a number of speakers, all of whom I think would support the petitioner's motion. They are as follows. Ms. Margolis, Ms. Schweitzer, Mr. Graff, Ms., well, Mr. Graff, I think. Ms. Vogt, Ms. Bernard, Mr. Toffel, and Mr. Tuckman, and James Lee, non-Town Meeting Member. Mr. Black would like to ask a question of the Select Board. Oh, he's, well. Somebody, whoever made the motion for the question has withdrawn it. So we'll proceed. Oh, yeah, okay, okay. Mr. Black has withdrawn his question. In any case, we have a motion to, motion for the question. And I've read off the people who will speak in favor of the petitioner's motion, if you allow them. So this is a motion for the question, requires a two-thirds vote. Yep. Time is up. May I have the vote count, please? Motion carries by a two-thirds vote, one hundred and sixty-two in favor, forty-four opposed, and nine abstentions. We vote first on the Advisory Committee Amendment, which you've heard described. It's on page one and two of supplement number two. Yes, ready for a vote? Voting period has commenced. I haven't really mentioned this, but these are all recorded votes, with the exception of the motion to adjourn. Voting period is up. Count, please. Motion fails by a vote of ninety-nine in favor, one hundred and nineteen opposed, and nine abstentions on the main motion, unamended, on page twelve-five and the top of page twelve-six. This is main motion, obviously, a vote four is in favor of it. Yes is in favor, no is opposed. Voting period is over. Let's count, please. Motion carries by a vote of two hundred and sixteen in favor, five opposed, and seven abstentions. Article thirteen. Motion under Article thirteen is on page thirteen-three. It's moved by Mr. Toffel, seconded by Mr. Sandman, that various committees, virtually all committees, subject to the open meeting law, maintain a record of roll call votes. Mr. Toffel. It's on page thirteen-three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Toffel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct eight. This is a simple bill that would edit our bylaws to require all substantive votes by any public body to be documented in the minutes as a roll call vote. The principle is simple. These are public votes that you could observe if you attended meetings, either currently remotely or hybrid or in person. So these are not secret votes. These are public votes. There's no reason, though, why only those who have the opportunity to attend those meetings in real time should be the ones to view who actually voted in favor, opposed, or abstained. What this motion does is it makes that a documented fact in the minutes, so all can see. It places the same language in the three areas of the bylaws in order to cover everyone, and it exempts administrative votes at the discretion of the chair, and it exempts votes on the minutes. So I'm going to reserve the rest of my time. In case there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's all I have in terms of prepared remarks. It's a fairly simple change. Thank you.
Mr. Brown. Cliff Brown.
Well, Ms. Moderator, I didn't realize that I was making this presentation. Mr. Ananian was.
I can't hear you, Mr. Brown.
I said that I did not realize I was making this presentation. I thought that Mr. Ananian was.
Okay, well, try Mr. Ananian.
Yes, hello. I did believe I was making this presentation. Hello, I'm Scott Ananian. I'm Town Meeting Member, Precinct ten. I'm presenting the Advisory Committee Report on Warrant Article thirteen. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on warrant article thirteen by a vote of fifteen to one to nine. When town bodies record votes on non-administrative matters, this article will require a roll call, that is, to list individually how each member of the committee voted, rather than to simply give the number of votes on each side. The petitioner feels that this will enhance transparency, since otherwise this information would only be available to those who attended the meeting or watched the recording, which may be difficult to find or search. And of course, attending the meeting may be difficult to attend, to get to for some people. In November of two thousand and twenty, Town Meeting approved a bylaw addition which required roll call votes when the Advisory Committee made a recommendation to Town Meeting. And in May two thousand and twenty-one, a similar bylaw change extended this to all town bodies making recommendations on warrant articles to Town Meeting in the combined reports. This article extends the requirement for roll call votes to all non-administrative votes by town bodies, and not just those votes which result in recommendations in the combined reports to Town Meeting. There is an exemption for administrative matters, so as to not unnecessarily prolong meetings. There is no exemption for unanimous votes, as the petitioner feels that recording the exact attendance at the moment of the vote is an important component of the public record of the vote. The warrant article consists of three sentences, applying first to committees established by Town Meeting, typically moderators committees, second to the Committee on Town Organization and Structure, and lastly to committees established by the executive branch, which are typically Select Board committees. The petitioner feels that this article would create greater transparency and accountability, even though it would require some public bodies to be willing to change practices slightly. Discussion at the Subcommittee and at the full Advisory Committee covered the possible financial implications, and we're satisfied there was no significant financial impact. Another topic discussed was whether some members of public bodies might vote differently if they were aware their votes would be subject to public scrutiny. The petitioner felt that if this were so, it would be a change for the better. At a meeting of the full Advisory Committee, it was asked whether working groups appointed by the Select Board would be covered by this article. It was clarified that groups subject to the open meeting law would be covered by the bylaw, but whether a specific working group is subject to the open meeting law would be a question best answered by Town Council. It was also brought to our attention that the Economic Development and Advisory Board recommended favorable action on this article on September twenty-ninth. In conclusion, a strong majority of the Advisory Committee voted to recommend favorable action on warrant article thirteen by a vote of fifteen in favor, one opposed, and nine abstentions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Evening, Bernard Green, Member of the Select Board, for a four to zero to one vote of the Select Board. As has been stated, Article thirteen is a petitioned article that seeks to amend the bylaws to require votes to be conducted via roll call for town bodies, except for approval of minutes and at the discretion of the chair when approving administrative matters. Administrative matters would include such things as setting meeting dates. That's probably the extent of that exception. The Select Board acknowledged that this would impose additional, but not huge, burdens on certain bodies, especially larger bodies. But the Select Board agreed with the petitioner that the additional transparency is worth the effort. And furthermore, it would only require some additional keystrokes or additional ink used by the meeting minute taker in order to accomplish the goal of this, of this warrant article. The Select Board voted favorable action on the motion offered by the petitioner by a vote of four in favor, none in opposition, and one Select Board member absent. Thank you.
Mr. Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think it's been covered, so I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Burstein. We'll always take a pass, Mr. Hoy.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Michael Burstein. I am a Town Meeting Member from Precinct twelve, but I'm also Chair of the Library Trustees. I have been trying to confirm, and I assume that this warrant article does also apply to the Library Trustees. The problem is that, as I read through the bylaws and I read through the warrant article, I cannot find the Library Trustees explicitly called out as being required to do these roll call votes. I would appreciate it if somebody could point that out to me where it is. So when I can go back to our next meeting, I can make it clear that we are also required to follow this bylaw change. Thank you.
That's pretty clear to me that Article three point zero point one applies to all elected or appointed public bodies that are subject to the open meeting law. It says bodies identified in this Article three. So I'm, I guess I, that's a good question. Mr. Toffel, what's your intention here?
The intention was to cover everyone. I thought this had done so. Perhaps the Town Council can weigh in?
Is Town Council available? Mr. Simpson?
I'm here. I'm sorry, I didn't catch Mr. Burstein's question. If you could repeat it.
The question is, is there anything that would exempt the Library Trustees from the operation of Article three point oh, point one of this bylaw change? Bylaw change.
I, I'm not aware of anything that, that would. Hold. I, I don't, I don't know. I apologize.
Well, your. Apologies certainly accepted by me. I don't know either. Mr. Burstein, would you, do you have any else, anything else to say? Sorry, we haven't adequately answered your question. You unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm Michael Burstein again, precinct 12, town meeting member, Chair of the Library Trustees. I, I just want to make it clear to the petitioners that with our next meeting, and we've already been keeping roll call votes. Through the pandemic with our next meeting, we'll make sure to make them more explicit. So we will, in fact, follow the. Intent of what I assume was in here in your, in your warrant article. But I, I would just suggest that. You should perhaps go back and, you know, make sure you're carefully, are in fact covering every single board since. Apparently, at least one board that we have found here is not explicitly being covered here. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. You had a question? Ken Goldstein.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Ken Goldstein, precinct 14. Probably for town council again, I'm wondering what the consequence would be if they would fail to take a roll call vote when they should have. Would it invalidate the vote? Is there a penalty? What consequence can we expect?
Mr. Simpson. Do we jail them?
The, there, there would be no. No active consequence. I mean, I, I believe that, you know, this, this is outside of the requirements, the state statutory requirements. So it would not be subject to something along the lines of an open meeting law complaint. But I believe that, that a, that someone who had noticed the behavior would bring it to the, the board's attention. And it would need to be corrected, similar to if, if a board. We have requirements, for example, that a certain bodies meet after a certain time that's in our bylaw. It, it has, over time, and it's just been incorporated, particularly at the staff level, that. They just won't schedule those particular meetings before the time allowed by the bylaw. So because it would be staff likely taking these, taking these minutes, I don't think the staff member present would allow. A vote to proceed unless it was a roll call vote.
Thank you. There's been a motion for the question, but we really isn't necessary to do that since I have no one else. Signed up to speak and no one waiting to ask a question. So this is the main motion in Article 13 on page 13-3. A yes vote would impose on the committees that have been described. The requirement to maintain roll call votes in most cases. A no vote would not impose that requirement. And we're ready for a vote. The voting period has commenced. Voting period is terminated. The count, please. Motion carries by a vote of 210 in favor, three opposed and 13 abstentions. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's not 10:30 yet, but. You've been such good citizens tonight. I think I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting until seven o'clock tomorrow evening. Is, would somebody like to make that motion? So moved, is it seconded? The motion has been seconded. This is motion to adjourn to tomorrow night. Ready? Yes, you go home. No, you stay. Oh, yes. Yes, we go home. This is not a recorded vote, by the way. Voting period is over. The count, please. Motion carries by a vote of 168 in favor, 51 opposed and eight. Abstentions and. Yes, the, tomorrow evening. We will consider the articles in the following order. First. The special town meeting number two, which is the. Meeting at which there's a single article dealing with the budget adjustments and the spiegel indemnity. We'll then proceed to Article 10, which has to do with hybrid town meetings. And we will pick up again, since there's no motion under Article 14. With Article 15 and so, so forth in the order in which the articles appear in the warrant. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting is adjourned until seven o'clock tomorrow evening.